All right, good morning everyone. We're going to call the May 12th special meeting of the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Zenger.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our mission, our God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Can please entertain a motion to acknowledge certificate of posting?
So moved.
Your first and second, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, that takes us, I hate to disappoint all our department heads here, we have closed session first, so it takes us to our closed session item which is title county administrative officer public employee appointment. Do we have any public comment for item 1A?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press turn and raise hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much, so that we'll take it to closed session. We have a public hearing scheduled at 9:30 or shortly thereafter. Thank you very much. Wait, do we have a public hearing? What's the public hearing? Yeah, sorry.
Hearing 2.8, which is Human Resources Interim CIO Ring, receive presentation on Assembly Bill 2561 regarding transparency and timely notification of vacancies in public agency positions.
Thank you. Presentation will be presented by Human Resources. I have Elvia Barosio, who is our Senior HR Analyst. Also Rosie Gusto, who is supporting in this presentation. But Elvia is going to go ahead and present today. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and members of the public. My name is Elvia Barosio. I'm a Senior HR Analyst here at the county. Today, we will be covering Assembly Bill 2561. I'll be talking about what it is, why, and what that means to San Manito County. Assembly Bill 2561 was signed into law on September 22, 2024, and took effect on January 1, 2025. The bill adds Government Code Section 3502.3 to the Myers-Millias-Brown Act to address high vacancy rates in the local public agencies by introducing law, introducing new transparency and accountability measures requiring regular reporting and active involvement of employee organizations, ensuring improved public service delivery. The California Legislature determined that vacancies were widespread and may be significant problem in the public sector subsequently negatively impacting the delivery of public service. What does that mean to us here at San Manito County? It means that the county must hold at least one public hearing per fiscal year to present the status of job vacancies and recruitment efforts. And these public hearings must occur prior to the adoption of the final budget for the fiscal year. Also, the employer organization participation. It means that recognized employer organizations are entitled and have the opportunity to present at these hearings and provide direct input on staffing issues. All five of the bargaining groups were invited. There is one bargaining unit that chose to participate, and they will be presenting right after us, which is SEIU. In addition, ongoing recruitment and retention efforts needs to be discussed and vacancy rates. We also need to provide additional information for those bargaining units with high vacancy rates. What that means is a bargaining unit with a vacancy rate of 20% or more, we would need to provide a total number of job vacancies in that bargaining unit, the total number of applicants per vacancy, per vacant position, the average number of days to complete the hiring process, opportunities to improve compensation and other working conditions. We also have to identify necessary changes to policies and recruitment activities, if any. We continue to partner with unions, community organizations, and stakeholders to identify and reduce any barriers there may be and improve access for applicants. The legislature finds and declares that high job vacancies impact public service, delivery, and workers who are forced to handle heavier workloads with understaffing leading to burnout and increases turnover that further exacerbate staffing challenges. And this is where we're at here at San Manito County. We have the vacancy rates, and you'll see SEIU, which is the general unit, is at 18.19%. MEG is the Management Employee Group, is at 10.23%. DSA, the Deputy Sheriff's Association, is at 7.84%. IA, which is the Institutions Association, they're at 22.73%. The Law Enforcement Management, LEM, is at zero vacancy rate. And we included their own rep, and they're at 16.33%. I have available a list of all the job, the vacant positions. If you guys needed to see them, I'll discuss a little bit more with the IA since we have to provide more information in a few minutes. So what we've done here at San Manito County is a bunch of things. We've done job fairs, career fairs. We've attended career fairs at the Hollister High School, Anzar High School. We joined, we got together with Behavioral Health and went to CSUNB in Monterey. We did a few job fairs here in the county. We also did HR meet and greets to, this is my favorite, is what we did is the public had the opportunity to come meet HR and talk about any positions they're interested in, ask any questions about the hiring process. And we did that at the county library here, and we also partnered with the library in San Juan. We increased visibility of job postings and promotional opportunities. We send out weekly emails to all the employees regards to promotional opportunities. We also update the HR social, our social media. We also partner with the PIO, and they also post our openings in the county's websites. We have a professional training series for employees. We, that is where the department selects about four topics throughout the year, and it gives the opportunity to employees for professional growth. What we changed this year is they're now in person. So I think that increases the opportunity that people have to communicate with other employees, and the attendance goes up as well. We do new hire orientation surveys and exit interviews. We get good feedback, and we use that information and see where we could fit it in and improve our processes. We do salary studies, salary adjustments to target hard-to-fill positions, and we continue to collaborate with departments and bargaining units to develop innovative strategies for enhancing recruitment and retention initiatives. Here's additional information in regards to the IA bargaining group. So their vacancy rate was 22.73%, which was considered a high vacancy rate. I'm going to show you right now the list of their positions. You see them? Okay. So the list of their positions, their vacant positions are the positions in red, which you'll see that most of them are correctional officers. There's a correctional sergeant and one juvenile institution officer. So the number of average days to complete the hiring process from when a position is posted for these positions is 60 to 90 days. And that is because the extensive background checks it takes. They do testing, background, polygraph exams, psychological exams, and medical exams. You'll see the number of total candidates for each position. And the reasons for rejections, because you'll see the difference between the number of candidates that we receive and the ones that actually go through background. And it could be anything from incomplete applications, unable to submit proof of legal right to work in the US, no show to invitation, failing testing score, withdrawal from the process, or didn't meet department standards. Does anybody have any questions? Also, in addition to the other recruitment efforts that we've had for the entire county, we changed a couple of things to try to get more candidates for the correctional officers. We've increased the testing frequency. It's now every other month. We've also changed it from weekdays to weekends to get more people to be able to attend the testing. We did a salary adjustment. So in addition to the previously negotiated COLA increases for IA, which was a 7% in January 2024, and a 6% in October 2024, these positions also received a salary adjustment of a 10% increase in August 2024. There was also an upward reclassification for the correctional officer series, where we eliminated the correctional officer 1 and brought everybody to a 2, and it kind of bumped everybody up. So it's upward classification. Everyone who was a 1 came to a 2, to 2 became the new 2. The 3 became the new 2. If that makes sense. So our approach to filling vacancies is always evolving to meet changing workforce needs, and we are committed to work with all the stakeholders to optimize our recruitment strategies. Any questions?
Thank you, Elvia. We'll go to public comment, and we'll come back.
Yes. So after, so I'm sorry. So within this same agenda item, SEIU is going to present their presentation. Should they do that first?
We can do, yeah. Let's do that. Let's go through all of them.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Christina Cardenas. I am here today as SAU 521's Local Chapter President, along with our Chief Steward, Denise Quintana. Together, we represent almost 400 members, encompassing your dedicated staff that proudly serve our community. I would like to take the time to acknowledge each department that SEIU 521 has the privilege and honor to represent. Agricultural Commissioner, Assessors, which is the department I have been working at for over eight years. Auditors, Behavioral Health, Child Support Services, that's where Denise has been serving for 23 years. Council of Governments, Clerk Recorder Elections, District Attorney and Victim Witnesses, Health and Human Services, Library, Office of Emergency Services, Probation, Tax and Treasury, Sheriff's Department, Resource Management, Integrated Waste and Recycling, Building and Permits, Public Works, and Roads and Maintenance.
Together, our members are the working wheels of the county and the driving force of operations that provide necessary services to our community. Of the 398.5 positions, SEIU represents 72.5 Of the 398.5 positions, SEIU represents 72.5 of those positions have been chronically vacant, with the majority being in the departments to provide services to our most vulnerable population. These positions have the highest needs in this county, such as mental health conditions in the Behavioral Health Department, social workers in Health and Human Services, and those in the Public Health Department. While we understand due to the funding, to the state funding budget cuts, the need for wanting to prepare for unprecedented times ahead, that tough decisions must be made. However, we do want to acknowledge the impacts implementing hiring freezes and the cutting of vacant positions can have on our members and therefore our community. It is worrisome to cut off the possibility of filling much-needed positions, ultimately increasing the risk of our current staff experiencing burnout. While we hope management will provide the utmost support to its members to minimize the effects, the extensive workload, we are concerned of increased future employee resignations. Especially since our county already has a history of being a training ground for other counties. And as a result, has a history of a large turnover. Any resignations at this point and going forward would not only negatively impact the underserved community, but also decrease morale and public perception. This is something we do not want to occur and want to work with the county in preventing.
To help prevent and minimize any future negative impacts on the community, we feel we must do everything we can collectively to maintain our members to ensure the community continues to receive the necessary services that we provide. Together, we must work towards a fair MOU negotiation, which is approaching to commence in the next couple of months. We want to collaborate on creative benefits that promote retention, ensure no cuts to be made on existing positions, especially those already in high demand. We welcome being part of the conversation to seek ways to increase revenue generating sources and the possibility of lowering the county's reserves to a more comparable percentage to similar counties. We thank you for giving us the time to speak on this matter and we look forward to working together on this. Thank you for having us today.
Anything further as far as presentations? And then we'll go to public comment and come back.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments. Do we have questions, comments? Start, I'm going to start, Rosario. Sorry.
Sure. So on the IA rate, so that's going to bring back up our HR staff. It said there were 210 candidates. This was on page seven of the presentation. There were 200, hold on, make sure I have that number right. No, sorry, 210 candidates and eight were in background and four have been hired. Are the rest rejected?
Yes, and those variety of reasons were...
You listed the reasons for the, but, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Out of 210 applicants, we got 12.
Yes.
Okay, it, do we, they just don't pass background?
Well, multiple reasons they don't pass background.
Or physical or... Okay. That's my main question on that one because it, that's a staggering number.
Yeah.
That you can have that many applicants and they're, I mean, is it, do we set? Does the county set the background requirements? Are we equivalent to other jurisdictions?
Yes, we're the same. So they go through a few backgrounds. It's a psychological test, written test, agility test. So sometimes they pass the written test and not the agility test or the other way around. But once they go through that process, they, they have to go through the medical background, psychological background, polygraph. So it's a lot of testing that they have to do. Another thing is that sometimes we invite more candidates than actually show up for testing. So there's a variety of reasons that that number is staggering.
Because I'm assuming this is happening across the state. It's not just happening in San Bernito County, correct?
I don't have that information for sure. I know that the counties just now are presenting their vacancy report because of the budgeting, so they have to present it before the budget is approved. So I can't say for sure. I'm assuming yes. I did a little bit of research and the correctional officer position is not like highly looked into. It's a pretty hard position. So I would assume yes.
Yeah, I'm just, if we could have creative conversations with how in the future, maybe we can... It's like, I look at it kind of like the future firefighters. How do we get future firefighters fit enough to be firefighters? How do we get future correctional officers to be fit enough and in the right mindset to be correctional officers? And how can we work to, I mean, I'm assuming the majority of these 210 people are from our community, which seems that we have an issue with health and other issues that need to help support people to be able to be eligible for these positions. I'm just shocked at the volume. It just is a really big number for me.
It is a big number and we've worked with the departments and we, other than, we've gone to job fairs and things like that, but the department as well has taken different steps to entice candidates to come and apply with the county.
Okay. My only other question was with the SEIU presentation, you listed, they listed, sorry, let me get to it. I'm sorry, I shut it off my screen. The solutions, and the solutions are more what I feel are goals that we need to try and achieve. But the one that struck me as the most interesting to be able to have the conversation is the revenue generating sources and ideas from staff on revenue generation. Have we done any outreach? I think this may go to the interim CAO. With SEIU in having some sort of a collaborative revenue generation conversation? I've never heard of that before.
I have not either, but I assume that that would be something that we could talk about. Yeah, it's, I would know, need to know a little bit more information what they mean by that.
I would...
But I think the admin would be open to listening.
I would be open to, you know, I have a hard time calling them solutions when they're all of our challenges also. But in, not just revenue generation, but expenditure savings. After working for the county for the time that I did work here and in other counties, one of the things that line staff and the staff that actually get the work done, it's amazing. They have ideas that will streamline processes if they're given the opportunity. It is a, it, it's disheartening that after all of these years of working in government, there are still departments in agencies. I'm not saying in ours, but I'm saying in agencies that aren't hearing where we can cut costs from a staff level, from their ideas that make things more efficient. So I would really like that conversation to be something that is not just about increasing revenue, but about reducing cost. Okay, thank you. Those are my only comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I could just add to a little bit about the law enforcement piece. Just, just a little bit of the long history of recruiting for law enforcement from my years. It is a very high bar. So, and there's multiple testing levels as indicated by LVS. So it is, there's a lot, so the volume looks high, but again, it's a very high bar. And so it takes a while to go through that and it's not always successful.
And are there programs in other counties that help get people to meet that high bar? Because where I think the challenge is, is people see the job description and they think that they could qualify for it, but they're not realizing all of the other requirements of applying for it. And are, could we be working with our community colleges? Could we be working with the high school? Could we be doing maybe more outreach on the physical and the mental, you know, challenges of the position? And I just, I feel like it's a missed opportunity that we could help grow within our community when we have that many people that are not eligible for a job that is so necessary, unfortunately.
It's extensive, especially the background piece. It's extensive. And if you look at a, just like a post, you know, police officers and standard training, personal history statement, I've told youth before, that's your story. And how you fill that out will depend on whether you are going to be successful in law enforcement. So really looking into that a little bit deeper. Sure, we can educate, but it's, it's really important because they've got to answer those questions. They have to do it truthfully.
Yeah, and being able to, with social media these days, it makes it even more challenging than it used to be. But maybe a mentorship program or something that would promote the need and the ability of what we're trying to achieve. So I appreciate your comment.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Supervisor Zaire? Just, just question. I caught something. You mentioned we were kind of the same as other counties as far as the, what Supervisor Cora was speaking to as far as the applicants and what's required and whatnot. And you mentioned polygraph, right? Do all counties use the polygraph still? I thought there were some agencies that were choosing to not go through that step. Is that the case or?
I don't know, but I couldn't find out.
Okay, I was just curious because I just, I was under the impression that that was not a universal thing, but I'm not sure. I was just wondering that. It's not a big deal. It doesn't matter either way.
Supervisor Satello? Yeah, thank you very much for this. I have a question. What, do we have the total vacancy rate? I saw it broken down by department.
Oh, the total vacancy rate? Hold on, let me see. I do not. So I could figure that out.
If you don't have it offhand, that's okay. If we could just maybe get a number.
I could get that to you.
Because I know we've had it in the past. I think it was 27% last year, if I remember correctly, at some point. I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all, Olivia.
I don't, I don't have it with me.
No, it's totally fine. It's not part of the presentation. If we could get that maybe through the CAO or something.
Yeah, we could get that to you today.
Okay, appreciate that. Just like I said, it's been very high. It fluctuates, I think, is fair to say. Do we know if there's more of a downward trend more recently? Because I think the message has been sent out from the CAO's office to departments that this vacancy budgeting model that we've been using, which is extraordinarily flawed, is going to be reined in.
Yes, I agree with that. So the vacant positions that are listed in what's current vacant right now, that what you don't see right now is what we've already spoke to the department heads and what their plan is to reducing those vacant positions. So the, there's a lot of vacant positions right now that department heads already are planning to remove those from the upcoming fiscal year. And they're positions who, they're positions that have never been filled or haven't been filled for a long time. So after the FTE, I guess, is approved, the new FTE is approved with this new fiscal budget, the vacancy rate would be lower.
Without having a total in front of us, it looks like just based on the department numbers that the vacancy rate as a whole has come down somewhat. Again, it fluctuates.
Yeah.
Is that due to positions being, it's not due to positions being eliminated. I assume it's due to hiring somebody.
I think it's a little bit of both. Since last budget last year, we did remove some classification of positions last year. So it would be a downward trend, yes. It will continue going downward as we go through this process.
Right, and it has to come down, as far as I'm concerned. The county, this has been one of the biggest flaws that we've had in our budgeting process, in our, in our organizational structure, is that we've had this, basically, we've had this phantom number for years. As long as I've been on the board, the number, the number of total positions that we have that's shown is really not an accurate number. It, it really should, you know, reflect more closely the reality of how many positions are actually filled. And in our case, you know, I've been saying for years, I don't think there's an argument against it. It's essentially an intentional artificial number, the number of positions that we have. It gives the impression that departments have flexibility in their, in their spending throughout the year. And we have to rein that in because we have to have a better picture. We should be budgeting for largely what we're going to be spending throughout the year. And having this vacancy budgeting model where you've had close to 30% vacancy rates in the past really prevents the opportunity for accurate budgeting. And I think what we're seeing now is that this problem is really truly coming to a head for our county because of the current budget process and the question marks that are out there still. I also will say that when you intentionally budget for positions that are never going to be filled, that you're missing other opportunities with the use of those dollars. So those dollars are committed to these positions and now therefore we don't have those dollars to spend on other essential needs throughout the county. So I'm really glad to see this moving forward. The state legislation is a good, I think, recognition of a problem statewide. But for us, I think it's a little more unique in that, you know, we know we're not going to fill a lot of these positions, basically. And I would actually, the states requiring the yearly report, I would actually prefer twice yearly. Maybe doing it at a mid-year budget review. We need to get back to doing quarterly budget reviews as a whole. And maybe in that mid-year budget review, we have an update on the vacancy rate. That's what I would like to see so that we're having a handle throughout the year, not just once a year. And then again, I've been ringing the alarm bell for years about this vacancy budgeting issue and I'm really glad that we're going to be budgeting more accurately for what we actually have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I add?
Yes, Supervisor Cora.
I believe on, on page five, the vacancy rates are listed and there are 103.5 vacancies out of the 638.5 positions total between all units. That's a 16.2% vacancy rate. But we previously received, and I wish these were dated. Unfortunately, I just have a copy of it. But it showed each one of the funds and departments in the division units. It showed the rate of the pay of the position and the number of days that that position was open and the dollar amounts that that was holding in the budget that was not being filled. And at this point, it was potentially $3.6 million. If we could have it in this format where we see the vacancies and the days that they've been vacant, it would be very helpful in some decision-making because some of these positions, it shows in one unit, one position was 1,074 days vacant. Another position in another unit was 1,392 days vacant. I think we're safe to say we've survived without them filled. Maybe we should reassess what those positions should be. I think this was invaluable. I'm really sorry I did not put a date on it when I got it, but I'm willing to share it with staff so you can see what was presented.
Yeah, I've seen that before and it's something we could provide. And just to confirm, it is 16.2% vacancy rate for the county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further? I think that's it because it's just a presentation there. Thank you very much, Olivia. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 3.8, which is Order Controller Joe Paul Gonzalez. Receive informational representation about transient occupancy tax. Thank you. Joe Paul?
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I think this presentation, I will definitely commit to being within the 10-minute limit. It's very short. So as, as the board knows, the county collects a transit occupancy tax on hotels and on lodging and, you know, for lodging and sleeping purposes, including camping areas. The county charges for camping areas. If they're less than 30 days, you know, anything greater than 30 days, 31 days and forward is not considered short-term rentals. So the, the tax was first initiated in 1986. It was 8%. And, and in June of 2018, the voters approved an increase to the TOT from 8 to 12%. And then in 2020, we were, we worked diligently to, with, to get a contract with Airbnb, with that platform, so that they could be collecting and providing, remitting the tax on behalf of their clients. Unfortunately, because of the way the platforms work, they don't provide who they are or where they're at. That's just the nature of... That's just the nature of how they do business. In August of '24, we entered into agreement with Hip Camp, and they have started remitting T O T. And in April of this year, we entered into agreement with HomeAway VRBO, began collecting and they began collecting and remitting T O T to the county. So on the left side is the registered operators in the county. County, you know, we're a small county. We don't have many. Those are the, you know, those are the official registrants. We have a couple that are unregistered on the right-hand side. McAlpine Lake and Park and Thousand Trails, they're not registered, but they do collect and remit the tax because they're responsible for it. Other short-term rental platforms that are out there are, in addition to the ones we currently have, are Booking.com, Ascend Hotels, FlipKey, H R S Holidays. We have been working diligently to get Bookings.com to agree to an agreement, but they kind of are ignoring us. And, you know, at this time, there are no, there are no offers in Booking.com in the county, in the unincorporated county. So here's the revenue numbers, T O T tax collected. In 2021, we were at 384, 85,000. And then we've kind of been consistently hoovering about a half million dollars from '21, '22, all the way to '23, '24. '24, '25, as you know, we're, you know, we're only completed the third quarter. And we know that there's a couple of, there's a couple of operators who are late on their payments for a couple of quarters. But overall, we expect that the revenue will come in about a half million dollars. So we, the county has a contract with Granicus Host Compliance. They identify the short-term rentals across the various platforms and they capture in real-time data. They let us know, you know, who's out there, you know, which specific sites are out there providing short-term rentals to the public. And, you know, they also provide other services, not only identification, but notification services to, you know, some of these operators who may be unlicensed or that are used in a platform that does not have a contract with the county. That was it.
Thanks, Joe Paul. Appreciate it. Go to public comment, we'll come back.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. We'll bring it back. Supervisor Satello, would you like to start?
Thank you. I just have one quick question for you, Joe Paul. On where you listed, there was the registered and unregistered. What does that mean, unregistered? Because you said that they're still, they are still collecting and remitting payments. So what's the difference between a registered and unregistered?
The ordinance requires that if they're going to be a hotel or act like a hotel, that they should be, they should be registered with the county.
So kind of like their business license?
Yeah, sort of like that. We actually issue them a certificate that allows them to operate as a T O T operator.
So are these two that are unregistered, are they working towards being registered? Is there any consequence of somebody not being registered or how does that work?
They're in, technically, they're in default of the ordinance. But, you know, in previous efforts, we tried to get them to become registered. But that's, you know, largely been ignored, so we, but we are continuing to get the tax, which is of course the main.
And so what would it require for them to be registered? Is it just a, like a application and a payment?
Yeah, pretty much. It's an application that they need to fill out and then, you know, at no cost. And we would, you know, provide them a certificate of registration.
So do we know why they don't want to register? I just, I have a hard time when we're asking people to do it. And then you have all of these people that are trying to do the right thing and follow along. And then you have a few people that aren't. It's like either everybody has to do it or nobody has to do it. It shouldn't be, well, if you don't want to do it, then don't do it. It's kind of like everybody's got to play by the same rules. You know what I mean? Like, I appreciate that they're paying, but I just, if it's, if there's no cost, it's just a simple fill out an application. I don't understand why they're not doing it. And I think we have to hold them accountable. You don't have a choice. This is what the ordinance is and you have to fill this out.
You know, as we, we do, not regularly, but we do audit the T O T operators. They, of course, are going to be top on the list for when we do go out and do, perform the audits. Because that's a, that's a trigger right there. Why, you know, why aren't they? This is a concern to us as well.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Zinger? Supervisor Velazquez?
Thank you. I agree exactly with what you're saying. And I don't understand the issue there. Either you're registered or you're not registered, meaning either you're in business or you're not going to be in business. If there's no fee, this is not very complicated. So we need to make sure we're taking care of that this year. You had a comment about Airbnb. It doesn't give you the information. They are paying the taxes. Are you talking about the information, the locations of the, where the stays are at or unincorporated in the city? How's that work?
It's only unincorporated in the, the unincorporated area that we have an agreement with Granicus to perform. And so those hotel-like or hotels, operators, or even not necessarily, you know, a formal business establishment. It could be somebody's house where they're renting out a room. And they use, excuse me, and they do so using one of the platforms. They are supposed to be registered with my office. They're supposed to be, they're supposed to have, you know, get a certificate if they're going to offer the rooms on occasion or all the time on Airbnb. And that's what we're working on now, is to identify, make, identify those, those operators that need to get registered as well. So that will help us get a better feel of, you know, just how much really is, is being, you know, how much tax revenue is coming in from Airbnb compared to the population of T O T operators using Airbnb.
So this again would be another case of unregistered.
Pretty much.
Okay, so this is a big problem now because we have to have that information. I know the Tourism Committee is working hard on trying to bring in more tourism. We need another hotspots. Why are people coming? So we have, we can follow up on the information so we could focus in on that for promotion purposes. So I think this is a time, if it's your office or somebody else's office that,
Yeah, it's my office.
Basically, you're not going to rent unless you have, unless you're registered. And that needs to be clear this year.
Well, yeah, you know, we send out notices to those operators that, hey, yes, we understand that, that the tax is being collected by Airbnb, but that does not relieve you of the fact that you need to be a registered T O T operator in the county. So those notices are going out. I have one staff member who is dedicated to doing that in my office.
Okay, we can just take care of it this year. Let us know what you need to make sure it's very clear that they have to be registered this year. I think that's a wise thing to let go on and on. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Curl?
Do we need to update our ordinance to find people that are not registered? Would that help? Because, you know, if you don't hit them in their pocketbook, they're just going to ignore you. And if we're doing these audits, I mean, we want to promote tourism, but at the same time, we do need the data to understand where are our tourists coming from? And if hypothetically, we added a hotel or another, the one thing I didn't see on here was registered, okay, it's under Sierra. Okay, because there's a new hotel that is being planned out at Ridge Mark and there's a new hotel being planned out at San Juan Oaks. You know, the data from those could be very valuable, so just to have that on the radar. But I really think, I agree completely, we can't just send a notice. If we have to institute a fine system and approve a fine for not being registered or for penalties for not paying timely, you stated that we had two or more that were a couple of quarters late in payment. What kind of penalties do we have on that?
They already, the ordinance has outlined penalties and interest. Penalty 10% and interest accumulates if they, you know, until they, until they pay the tax. And, you know, we're in dispute right now with one operator that's on that list. And that it's highly likely that we'll be coming back to the Board here under a, for a, to provide a hearing for that operator, to, you know, they're requesting that we eliminate the penalty and interest. And, you know, we won't do that at, you know, at the administrator level. Well, you know, that's something that pertains to the Board to make those decisions.
Well, I would recommend that maybe we consider relooking at the ordinance and having some fines on the lack of, if they haven't registered within 90 days and they've received notices, that we can put penalties on them to encourage them to register. Thank you for the presentation.
That would require a measure going back to the voters for approval.
For a fine, not an increase in the tax, a fine for not registering.
It would, you know, it's a change to the ordinance and that one's voter-approved. I don't, you know, I'll defer to council to answer that.
If council could look into that, you don't have to answer right now. But if you could look into that, I want to make sure that if we're talking about a fine for late fees as opposed to, we're not asking for a tax increase. It's just a fine for not paying or for not registering, which is free of charge. All you need to do is register. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe Paul.
Yeah, and thank you. I'm along the same lines here. I'm not going to play the lawyer, but I don't believe we need to go back to the voters to put it, we can put in a new ordinance if we have to, that could implement fines for operators that are not complying. And that's what I'm going to suggest is bringing back, we need to probably do some legwork, but we need to, if we need to create an ordinance that creates hefty fines, hefty, hefty fines for people who aren't complying with this, I have a feeling we're losing out on a lot of revenue here, to be really frank, considering the rapidly increasing demand. We're seeing Pinnacles National Park. We know our hotels are basically full throughout the week, the limited hotels we have. That means that all these platforms that are doing short-term rentals are also very likely increasing quite a bit here in recent years. And we're missing out on all that revenue. I'm particularly interested in not only creating an ordinance, if we have to, that puts in hefty fines, I'd like to see potential language of prohibiting platforms from operating, like Booking.com, who's ignoring us. I'd like to, if we can, to put in some language that you can no longer operate here if you don't want to comply with our rules. I think we have to get really tough with this and add some real teeth to whatever rules or rules we have or don't have in place. And I think it should be a real, you know, considering budget issues, I think it should be a significant priority of ours. I'd like to know also if we can get a list. I don't know how we could administratively do this. Maybe we need to hire a private investigator. I'm joking, but to find out really how many of these platforms there are out there that are the major platforms, because if you're, I didn't see Airbnb listed. Are they, they actually register? Are they the one short-term rental? Because I didn't see them.
Well, they're a platform. They're not really registered because they're just doing it on behalf of a client who is the taxpayer. And so they're just using their platform to, basically, by agreement with the operator and collecting the tax and remitting it to the county.
Okay, but there's, there are other platforms outside of Airbnb. Are you, so you're confident that we're getting revenue, now just from Airbnb, that we're getting the appropriate revenue?
Yeah, yeah.
From Airbnb, but then you mentioned Booking.com is just...
Hip Camp and HomeAway VRBO, we're currently receiving revenues from those three platforms.
There are other platforms, I assume, out there because it's a competitive world.
The ones on this, oh, it's no longer up. The platforms of interest, Bookings.com is what we're working on now, Ascend Hotels, FlipKey, H R S Holidays. Those are the other ones that, there are many others, yes.
Exactly, exactly.
This is just a snippet of the number.
There's a way of getting a comprehensive list of the top, whatever number of these platforms are and targeting them, putting in an ordinance, putting in hefty fines, saying basically, you're not going to operate in our county if you don't comply with our rules. Putting that in the ordinance and coming back and getting this done as quickly as possible. I, we're losing out on a lot of money here, it sounds like.
On the very bottom of this page, and I don't, I can't get it up, but anyway, there's a little asterisk, says, "Platforms with previously advertised short-term rental listings that are currently inactive." And so there's, like Booking.com, there isn't a single offer in the unincorporated county of, in, under Booking.com. Or Ascend Hotels, FlipKey, or H R Holidays. In other words, every single offer that's being monitored out there by Granicus, they are all, you know, they're all being covered through the three platforms that we currently have a V C A with.
But you've also acknowledged that we're losing a lot of money, very likely. So there's something missing here.
I think the biggest issue is the non-registration.
Okay, so either way, I'd like, I'd like an ordinance to come back. I don't know if we want to do another ad hoc or if we want legal, Supervisor.
Yeah, I say, sir, I know a lot of counties have had this problem in the past and they basically have put an ordinance in place requiring Airbnb or anybody else to have to register first with the city or the county to do business or you don't operate. And, yeah, and it's out there. I know a lot of counties already have this in place, so it's nothing new. Everybody went through this several years back, so.
We followed the Marin County and Santa Cruz County model of implementation of these platforms.
So it wouldn't be hard to put it in an ordinance. And that's what we should be doing because that's the base of what should be happening. So that way, Booking.com, for example, wants to do business in the county, they have to register first, even though they don't have any offerings at the time, they're ready to go.
Supervisor Curl?
So.
I could tell you, that's exactly what they don't want. They do not want to register as a T O T operator because they're saying they are not the operator. Somebody else is the operator. And so they, you know, as part of their agreement, they will not disclose where.
Again, other communities have gone through this already. It's out there. This is not going to be hard for us to pull together and get a direction that makes sense.
Supervisor Curl and then Zinger?
In sitting down with Hip Camp, because I have been following legislation and working with them on some challenges that they're going through, it's understanding that, like you said, they're not the operator. But they're willing, if we are willing to sit down with organizations like them, they're willing to sit down and hear feedback of what makes more transparency to the consumer. One of the things that they've discussed is an enhancement in their systems that show that they have registered, like, these are the, these are the items that are required by that county. And it has, like, they're registered, they are, they collect and pay the T O T tax. They're looking at different ways of being able to work with your. They, they're looking at different ways of being able to work with jurisdictions. What they don't want to do is they don't want to be the enforcement because that's not their role, and they wanna stay out of the enforcement role. But what they're willing to do in my conversations with them is they're willing to sit down, and if we see that we have a bad apple, or we have someone that, mm, we see that they're on the site, but they're not registered in our county, we can request information to be able to reach out to them, even though they won't give us all, like, a master list. Um, it, it's a real fine line of what their role is and what our role is. And they're trying to come, uh, with some sort of an offering to county jurisdictions of saying, "We'll, we'll put this, yeah, they're registered, yes, you know, they're current on their TOT", whatever that they're able to do, but it's a collaboration between what information the county has and what information we're requiring be posted on their, their platform. So I think it is an area we can have a conversation, but each one is gonna be a little different. And, um, I, I, I just see where, where they're coming from after sitting down and, and, and meeting with them directly. So I, I see the challenge, but there is a way around it.
One of the things that, um, came to mind is that, you know, I, I could contact, uh, my counterparts in other, uh, counties that, uh, have these agreements and to find out, do a kind of a survey of what they're doing, what kind of information being provided, so that, uh, you know, we get a kind of a up-to-date, um, of, of what is, you know, what is actually being provided by these platforms? And how their ordinances, you know, differ than ours.
Super Zinger?
Yeah. Thank you, yeah. Um, I just, I support the idea of the ordinance, especially to get some of these that aren't registered, just some sort of fine to get them to register. I would just support doing that, you know, as rapidly as possible. And if we have to do an ad hoc, if it's not clear enough what we want, uh, what the direction is, if we have to do an ad hoc, I would just say that, um, and recommend that we just get that done very quickly, and we can just adopt an ordinance and, um, clean this all up very quickly. I don't think, I don't wanna just, I don't wanna drag this out and look at every other county in the state and try to figure... Like, we can do this quickly, I think. I don't think it's that complicated.
Appreciate that. I'm hearing, uh, at least some consensus. Thank you for Super Jose Curro suggesting an ordinance. If legal's gonna confirm for us what we believe is that we, that we don't have to go back to the voters to implement penalties for non-compliance with, uh, the law? I mean, I, so if he can come back and, and how do we wanna move forward, though, with bringing the process-wise, bringing back some sort of ordinance? Do we wanna direct council to do some, some work?
I would recommend that this be with the Tourism Committee because one of the things you're gonna wanna get is the feedback from these platforms. Invite the platforms to be present and, and have the conversation about what we're looking at adding, and if they're willing to do it. I, I, I think the ordinance with the fine is a legal question that legal can come back pretty quickly and just say, "Do we have to have a, a vote of the people to in-impose a fine?" I don't believe we do. So if that could be done right away, that'd be great. Um, but I think, uh, starting that conversation from the Tourism Ad hoc would, uh, not ad hoc, the Tourism Committee, would allow you to get the feedback we need to bring back to the board to make recommendations on what this ordinance could look like.
And I would just expand and say, if, I would like legal to bring some templates, recommendations to the Tourism Committee, so it's not a freewheeling conversation and that you're, we're focusing the conversation and then bringing that back to the board. Um, I'm not overly familiar with this industry, but just my general understanding and hearing today is that we absolutely have to target the platforms. Because if you don't target the platforms, we don't know who all the operat-, we have no way of knowing who all these operators are. Am I missing something? Um, that you, the, the platforms are the ones that really are the ones that are, need to be the, they need to be the enforcer because we don't have the resources to, uh, go out and, and figure out who all these operators are. Now, I'm opening a can of worms, but go ahead, 'cause I'd like to be educated.
Well, I, I just want you to sit down with a platform and have the conversation because I've had it across the state with Hipcamp, and they have no problem with being able to, if you find a bad apple, they'll give you all the information to be able to go after that person. But what they don't wanna do is be the enforcer because it actually taints their business. And so, coming up with understandings of what do we want reported on their platform? Are they registered? Are they current on their TOT tax? I mean, these are things that the platforms would be willing to do in collaboration with the county.
But could our ordinance require that the operators collect that information? Whether, ask them whether they're registered or not? And if they're not registered, then that triggers the platforms providing that information to us?
It's a collaboration between the platform and the county. The county has to provide what we have existing, and then they would be able to show what's not. But what they don't wanna do, and I just highly recommend you sit down with the platform people, they don't wanna be in the enforcement world.
And enforcement was probably the wrong word. We just have to have a mechanism to get the information. But Super Jose Blaskin?
So, just going back on this, you know, Airbnb works through, obviously, individuals' own properties. We need to make sure those individuals are registered.
Right.
So that's number one. Everybody has a license, so we can, we can track that. The platforms, they collect the funds, and then they submit it to your office, correct?
Yes.
So the key here is, is making sure we're getting people registering. And we wanna, you know, one of the biggest reasons is really to help them succeed. Now here, look at this and do these types of things, you know, have a different account for, for the monies or whatever you're doing. And we wanna make sure we're, uh, helping all these, basically, small businesses succeed. So the, the key is getting them registered and making sure the platforms know they have to be also registered with the, uh, the county. And this can go pretty smoothly. Again, this has been, been done all over the place, so it's not hard for us to get this information.
Currently, with the three VCA's that we have, uh, that would require a change in the language, would require, uh, either amendment or, uh, you know, completely redoing the, um, you know, the VCA agreement with, uh, with the platforms. 'Cause that's not currently in their, in those agreements. Um, so, you know, have to work with legal to, to initiate that. Uh, but I, but I, um, would assume that, uh, the ordinance change would, would precipitate that.
Super Zizzella?
Joe Paul, can you talk a little bit about that Granicus host compliance? Can you explain? 'Cause I, I guess I thought that Granicus platform is kind of, um, looking at all the different platforms and finding, are they identifying if they're? I mean, it's as simple as going on VRBO and typing in Hollister or San Bonito County and whatever comes up. So I guess I was under the impression that that's what kind of that platform is doing. Is that not what that platform is doing?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what they're doing. They're looking at every, all, all the offers that are in the different platforms with the locations in the unincorporated county.
And then if, let's just hypothetically say they identify five that are unregistered here, do they then let you know, "Hey, there's, that we've gotten a listing of five, um, short-term rentals"? And then do we, would that then trigger us to send a notice to the people that, "Hey, you've gotta be registered"? Or are we not worried about it because, um, we're just thinking, VRBO or whoever it is, Airbnb, they're just sending the TOT? So are we worried about, or have we in the past? I think right now, currently, we're saying, "Yes, we wanna get all these registered", but in the past, have we just kinda worried about that bottom line? Or were we concerned with, um, the individual short-term rentals? Kind of those listings and those people being registered?
Um, to be honest with you, in the past, we were very focused on the bottom line.
Okay.
And bringing in as much, uh, TOT, uh, revenue into the county that's, you know, has been escaping. Um, we, we knew initially that there was a, there was a lot of rentals going on out there, uh, short-term rentals, uh, on, uh, different platforms, and we were capturing zero of, of those tax dollars because, uh, the, you know, first of all, we didn't have a mechanism to identify who are these TOT, um, operators that are not registered. And, um, we didn't have that mechanism. And, um, we, we didn't have, uh, you know, Granicus, who is now the, you know, now our eyes and ears to, uh, locate, uh, you know, where these short-term rentals are being done. But keep in mind that every single short-term rental right now in the county, every single one is covered by one of the three, uh, short-term rental platforms that we have a VCA with. So there isn't, at this time, so there's not a single one that is not falling with, you know, um...
So I guess one of the questions that we need to be asking ourselves is, do we want every single person that is doing these short-term rentals to be registered or unregistered? 'Cause it sounds like right now, anybody that's falling under Hipcamp, um, VRBO, Airbnb, they fall under, is it the VCA? Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
Okay, so they fall under this VCA. They are not having to, um, be registered. They, who is registered and unregistered are doing bookings and short-term rentals outside of those larger platforms. Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, if, if they're registered or unregistered, there are no other, um, operators who are using anything other than those three at this time.
Right, but what I'm saying is that if they are listed under there, we are not requiring, if you're listing your place, say, under Airbnb, the county isn't requiring you to be a registered short-term rental in our county because you are listing your property under one of the platforms?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we are?
Yes, that's, that is, that's something that we are working on. We're sending, we're sending them notices, uh, that, hey, they're...
And, and we only have two? Only have two unregistered?
Uh, no, that's, that's just the, uh, known, uh, unregistered TOT taxpayers that, um, are, um, may or may not be using Airbnb or any of the others. They're sending us a check directly.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. So, but there could be 50 out there that are unregistered right now that you guys are working on that are short-term rentals through a platform, then? I mean, I'm hypothetically, it could be 10, I don't know. I'm just throwing something out there. It could be whatever. That's not part of this presentation?
N-no, no.
Okay.
Um, because, um, because we haven't identified who they are so that we can, Granicus is doing that now to be able to, so that we could send a notice to them that, "Hey, we saw, you know, we were, it was reported that you had a short-term rental on Airbnb on this date at this location." And here's, uh, so that you know that there is an order, an ordinance that requires you to become regist-, uh, registered TOT operator.
Okay.
Even though, uh, the tax is being collected
Right.
by a voluntary agreement.
I got that. Do you by chance know how much we pu-, we pay to Granicus for kind of this hosting compliance arm?
Less than $10,000.
Less than $10,000?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all my questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add to it? And this is why this is important, to get everyone registered. And again, it's, it's to get them the help they need to succeed. But part of this business is somebody books through Airbnb one week, they go, they visit, they like the location, they make friends with the owners, and they say, "We wanna come back next month, but we're gonna call you direct. Is that okay?" Absolutely. And that's the goal of a lot of these operators is to not use Airbnb and try to do a direct connection through that. That's why it's important, um, to make sure we're doing it right. And they're, they're business owners. These are business owners now. And again, we, we wanna make sure we're collecting, but also helping them succeed in what they're doing. So this is a very important step.
In, in other counties, uh, you know, like Marin County, there's only certain sections, uh, areas that they allow Airbnbs to, uh, to, to, uh, exist uh, because it's, it's highly regulated. You know, they're, in, in those areas, uh, you know, the neighbors don't like to have Airbnb, uh, um, you know, guests next door, that kind of thing. But we don't have that at all. Uh, we don't have a, well, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's why we wanna know who the players are because we can help control it. We don't want bad actors getting into this.
Okay. Yeah, I, I te-, I totally agree. Uh, I don't see any downside in requiring all operators to register so there's full transparency and, um, and I do, uh, so is there consensus? Do we need to take a vote on bringing something back to the, uh, having legal counsel bring back recommendations, tourism?
I have direction.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Anything further? Hearing none? Thanks, Joe Paul.
Okay.
We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
We gotta get going. Yep, sorry. Yep. Okay.
Don't worry.
All right, thank you, everybody. We're back. We're on 3-point B with Joe Paul again for the informational presentation on cost allocation plan.
Okay, so for the cost allocation plan presentation, I'm going to ask my assistant auditor controller, Leanne Galinas, to, to be the primary presenter, and I'll be here to, also to answer any questions from the board. Leanne?
So, good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors, members of the public. So today's presentation about cost allocation plan will explain the basis for the plan, how it is prepared and calculated, and changes to the cost plan charges over these past two fiscal years. So the cost allocation plan is a formal document that outlines the methodology and the process used to identify allowable indirect costs and distribute them across county departments using an equitable and federally approved method. The county's plan must comply with federal principles and standards of the Office of Management and Budget's Uniform Guidance, otherwise known as the II CFR Part 200. And the California State Controller's Office performs a thorough review of the county's plan every year and must provide provisional or formal approval of the plan before any indirect costs or direct billings may be reimbursed by state or federal agencies. So the plan is a method in which the county recovers costs incurred by central service departments for providing services to programs or other departments. The central service departments for the county include buildings and grounds, the county administrative office, the auditor controller's office, county council, HR, IT, risk management, and building depreciation. So the types of costs included in the cost allocation plan are direct costs, which can be directly assigned to a department relatively easily with a high degree of accuracy. An example is an employee in IT that is assigned 100% to HHSA, for example. Indirect costs are costs incurred for a common purpose benefiting more than one program or department and not readily assigned to a specific beneficiary. And incoming costs are costs that are allocated from one central service department to another. So it would be HR providing services to the county auditor controller's office, for example. So the cost allocation plan is prepared using data from two years ago. So, for example, the actuals from fiscal year 2324 are billed and used to prepare the fiscal year 2526 cost plan. So because of this two-years-in-a-rear method, a carryforward is included in every cost plan every year. And the carryforward is a true-up of costs from two years ago less costs from four years ago. And the reason for that is because actual costs from fiscal year, using the example fiscal year 2122, are used to prepare the fiscal year 2324 plan. So two fiscal years later, once we've completed the fiscal year 2324, the fiscal year 2122 costs become fixed costs in the equation of the carryforward calculation. So the carryforward allocation for fiscal year 2526 takes actual costs from 2324 and subtracts the fixed costs or actual costs of 2122. So central service department costs are allocated to benefiting departments based on usage using allocation factors, which thereby helps ensure a fair distribution of costs. So here I list the different allocation factors that are used by central service department, and they include time studies, department expenditures, FTE counts, number of IT devices, K-box tickets, and then square footage based on occupancy for, for purposes of being able to bill out, like, buildings and grounds, and also, no, for, for purposes of allocating buildings and ground costs. So through the allocation of these costs, benefiting departments see a complete picture of their full operating costs. The general fund where central service departments are reported can recover costs of providing services to state and federal programs. So common reasons cost allocation plan cost change would be that the costs of the central service departments, what it takes to operate, would increase or decrease. On an individual department basis, a benefiting department's share of cost plan charges can change as its allocation factors change. So for example, if, let's just say, behavioral health experiences a significant increase in FTE count, their share of the cost allocation plan would change and would increase, and other departments' cost plan charges would decrease in proportion to those changes in FTE count. For, specifically for the central service departments that use FTE count as an allocation factor. So looking at the fiscal year 2425 and 2526 plans, some of the factors that contribute to the overall change was the 7% COLA that was effective October 2023, which increased the costs for many of the central services. Risk management, total premiums increased by $274,000, plus there was a decrease in direct billings of $155,000. And their incoming costs experienced a net change of $19,000, meaning $19,000 more in the 2526 plan was shifted away from risk over to other central service departments. And county council experienced the biggest decrease. Their salaries and benefits and services and supplies experienced a decrease combined of $38,000. And $107,000 more than the previous year was shifted away from county council and over to other central service departments. So one thing I just want to also point out is that this table just shows what is allocated through the plan, those allowable indirect costs. So it doesn't necessarily present the total costs of operating those departments. And that's everything for cost plan.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment and bring it back?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Go back to the board. Anything from the board? Swirza Curro? Okay. Swirza Velazquez? Swirza Zenger? Swirza Satello?
I don't quite know where to start with it. So, I just want to make sure, I believe that everybody's been kind of asked to take like a 5% cut. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, departments were asked...
But the cost plan, if I'm reading this correct, is quite an increase compared to previous years, right? So I'm just trying to figure out, like, how do our departments take a 5% cut? But then it looks like on some of the increases, they're well above 5%. So it's almost like a double or triple hit to potentially a department. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, but I think there's other factors that kind of play into that as well, such as the increases in salary and things like that, too. So it's, it's not apples and apples, you know what I mean? It's, it's very hard to, because again, this is two-years in arrears, too, right?
Yeah. I think that's what's chal- but does it, per the state and the federal guidelines, does it always have to be, I mean, that's just the way it is, that two-years in arrears?
Yeah, that's just the methodology that, that was, you know, developed, and that's been adopted across the country for all, in order to be able to bill those costs to those state and federal programs.
Okay. And do we know what, like, the bill for the state and federal programs are?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I, I would say it would probably be roughly about half because they, I mean, they receive a large portion of those charges as well. And so they would have to review their own funding to be able to determine, you know, which, how, how those costs can then be recovered by them, but...
And so that, we're actually receiving revenue in, for the cost plan, from state and federal reimbursements?
So, so they get charged out, like, to, for example, HHSA, behavioral health, though through, they, they get charged out to those programs, and the general fund is receiving a reimbursement?
Because like our other general fund departments, I mean, it's like, we're just paying from the right hand to the left hand or left to the right, essentially, right? I mean, it's not like there's actual money that's being exchanged.
Well, and, and that's one of the things that, like, even those other general fund departments will want to also evaluate, to see if there's any potential to recover any share of those costs through, there's, you know, certain grants that they receive from the state or federal government.
But that would only be for our subvention departments, right? Because like, our general fund isn't, general fund departments aren't necessarily going to be able to recoup any of the cost share plan to the state or federal, right?
Well, other...
Am I thinking about that correctly?
So, so general fund departments, some of them, not all, do receive some state and federal funding, but primarily, you're correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it is just going from one to the other.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything, Joe Paul? You got, no, you're good? Swirza Curro?
Yeah, you, you triggered something in a thought process that I never looked at when it came to funding of a general fund department that receives state or federal funding for a grant. How are we monitoring that those grants are being looked at with the cost plan in mind to be able to recoup some costs from those grants? I will tell you, I didn't do it. As, I mean, maybe I missed the boat on that, but if there was a grant, I wasn't looking at the cost plan and saying, hey, I know this grant was X amount of money in my budget, this is how much I'm going to allocate towards billing to that grant to the feds or to the state to recoup that portion of my cost plan. Are departments doing that?
That is part of grant administration. The grant administrator is supposed to, is supposed to take those costs associated with, you know, with these indirect costs and, and basically reduce their grant amount used for operations by the amount associated with the indirect costs. So that those costs are, so the indirect costs associated with the grant, you know, mission or grant project are, are recovered.
Okay, because a grant administrator...
That's, that's each department that has...
Each department.
That has a, is in charge of, of a federal and state grant.
Right. So we're talking about staff. And if they don't know, they may not be doing it. I just want to know if staff is doing it. I mean, I, I'm not sure if that's something that we can answer today, or if that's something that we need to look into, but I'm going back through, I mean, because you triggered it right there. I went, whoa, I can tell you right now, in all those grants that I received, not once was I looking at the cost plan and trying to get that money back from a state or federally fund. Because typically, they only told us, these are the things you can claim, and they don't put a lump there that says cost plan share.
I think it is something that we could look into.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Further? I was just gonna say, I think the issue is some of it is, but not enough of it. And that's what we need to be working on as a county, really, revenues in different areas, as we talked about TOT here, and fees in different departments to recapture as much as possible.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe Paul. That would wrap up that item. It would take us to, wait, did we do public comment for that? We did, yeah. That would take us to the 3-point C, which is presentation on the ACFR.
Okay, for this presentation, also calling upon Leanne to, to make this presentation initially to the board, and if we have any questions, I, I'm also here to help.
Okay, so today's presentation on the county's fiscal year 2324 annual comprehensive financial report was a presentation that was originally prepared for the audit committee. And so today, we're going to be providing an update on that ACFR and fund balances as of June 30th, 2024. So the fiscal year 2324 ACFR was finalized on December 30th, 2024. The independent audit firm, E. Bailey, issued their independent auditor report with an unmodified clean opinion of the county's ACFR. The independent auditor's report stated that in their opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the county of San Benito as of June 30th, 2024. So some highlights that occurred...
So some highlights that occurred, um, during the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four year. So for the general fund, total revenues increased by a combined seven point six million over the previous year. So this was due to a combination of things. Um, there was a decrease in aid from other governments of nine point eight million, which was a result of some federal and state funding that the library received in that prior year, which then didn't, was not received in that subsequent twenty-three, twenty-four year. The general fund received a one-time payment of six point one million, um, from a developer, a six point seven million one-time insurance recoveries related to the Hall of Records building fire, and approximately three million dollar increase, uh, combined for tax and interest earning revenue. Total expenditures increased in the general fund by eleven million over the previous year. Approximately three point five million is attributed to just regular salaries and benefits and services and supplies. And approximately six point seven is attributed to the impacts of the Hall of Records fire. The road fund total revenues increased by sixteen million, primarily in aid from other government, so state and, state and federal, uh, funding for road capital projects. And total expenditures increased by twenty-five point four million related to road and bridge projects. So GASB fifty-four was a standard intended to improve clarity and consistency for financial reporting, aimed to help users better understand how resources or fund balance are constrained or available for use. So the different classifications of fund balance are defined here. Non-spendable fund balance are amounts that are not in spendable, in spendable form, such as amounts held as inventory or legally or contractually required to be maintained, such as amounts prepaid for future services. Restricted fund balance includes amounts with constraints placed on their use by external agents or by law. Examples of this include ARPA funding, um, or fees that are collected, um, for a specific purpose. Committed fund balances are, include amounts with constraints imposed by formal action of the board of supervisors through resolution or ordinance. Assigned fund balances include amounts with constraints imposed by a less formal action taken by the board or management of the county to assign amounts for a specific purpose. And unassigned fund balance are all of those that do not fall within any of the other category classifications. So budgeting is a forward-looking process that focuses on estimating how funds will be allocated and spent. It is a spending plan that reflects the priorities of the board of supervisors. And it establishes the goals of how fund balance will be used or maintained in the upcoming fiscal year. Where accounting is a historical process that records and reports actual financial transactions. And at the end of the fiscal year, accounting reflects how actual revenues and expenditures affected fund balance. And shows whether fund balance has increased and or decreased based on that activity. So this graph shows a historical five years of fund balance by classification for all governmental funds. This includes a general fund, road fund, HHS A, et cetera. And this graph shows general fund only, a five-year history of fund balances by classification. You'll see that the most significant change is probably from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to the twenty-three, twenty-four year, which was due to the reclassification of unassigned fund balance to assigned. And that was to comply with the board's fund balance policy, which established the operational contingency, emergency contingency, and disaster contingency. So as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, these three assignments totaled sixteen million, five hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. So in the ACFER, there is a note disclosure every year that presents fund balances by classification and further by purpose or source. This is a condensed version of note seventeen in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four ACFER. And it presents, um, the breakout of general fund fund balances. So, um, as the county goes through the process of preparing the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, the fund balances as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, together with projected activity of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, revenues and expenditures, must be considered in order to provide an informed and, of, an informed estimate of the financial condition of the county as of July first, twenty-twenty-five. The county auditor's office has met and held trainings with departments to assist in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five year-end close. Our objective is to provide departments with guidance on accounting principles, um, to help facilitate a timely and accurate year-end close. Actual fund balance totals as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five are not considered final until the final issuance of the ACFER, which has historically been in December, when the external auditors issue their independent auditor's report. And that is everything for my presentation.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment and we'll come back?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board. Somebody wanna start? Some sort of Velazquez?
Yeah, I do have a question. You pointed out that there is accounted for six point seven million for the insurance for the building after the fire. So the county has received that, that money?
We have received insurance proceeds, yes.
The reason I'm asking that is because in our conversations, there was still, uh, information that was not out there. We've, we're informed that the money had not been received. So that money is finalized out now, six point seven million from the insurance.
So that was as of June thirtieth, twenty-four. Um, I believe there may be additional amounts.
Yes, there is, um, that is the amount as of that date. There has been some additional, um, monies that have been received. It's for the, the cleanup part, the restoration. There's still a little bit left. We still have one more payment that's due that it's being audited by outside auditors through the insurance right now.
Right, but as I understood in the past, was we did not know what that amount would be. And I think this is a good example of why sharing information, making sure everybody's clear on what's happening is so important. Because I know I've felt, I'm waiting to hear what that number is so we can start the process of how do we reconstruct or do the work that needs to be done in that, that building based on what amount of insurance dollars were coming in. So now it seems like we, we know that number. It's been there.
I think we need further clarification because there's a delineation here.
Yeah.
If we can explain that further.
So the six point, so that money that we received for insurance was for the remediation, the cleanup, the relocation of departments. There's still a little bit left that we know, I think it's under, um, it's under four hundred thousand, somewhere around there, that we still owe to the restoration company that did the cleanup piece. So there's one that piece. Once that is finished, then we'll be able to go back through insurance to see how much it's going to cost to re, basically rebuild the building.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have something, sir Zicuro?
So, in your charts, it shows committed. And it's purple. Is there anything shown as committed?
No, not as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
And the purpose of committed would be to ensure that contracts that have been allocated, I'm assuming over a multi-fiscal year period are identified and that committed cost is known from the ACFER for future budgeting purposes. Is that not what the purpose of committed is? Is it for a different purpose?
So, so committed fund balances, um, are, they, they are classified as such when the board takes formal action to commit those for a specific purpose. That's what makes that fund balance committed.
So when we approve a contract for five years for a budget, for a, a department, and let's just say it's five million dollars to keep it easy, and it's a million dollars each year, would that not be direction from the board to commit that money?
So it's, it's through formal action, which would require a resolution or ordinance.
So in order to commit funds and show them in the ACFER and give us a true understanding of what's remaining available, we would have to take board action telling you as the auditors to commit that money in a resolution.
Well, keep in mind that contracts have contractual language that basically says, these contracts for five years subject to budget appropriations. So if in any given year that we don't have the budget appropriations to cover that contract, you know, we're, you know, we, we have that language in there that we are, we're not bound to, to, uh, to maintain that contract.
So we have a five-year contract with wording that allows us to get out of it in year two because we can't appropriate the money for it. But I know I keep going back to procurement. It's, it's my, my thing. And showing where our committed costs are. If we were, if we haven't gotten the procurement policy to a point that departments are encumbering their contracts into their budgets, wouldn't we as a board want to take action and when we approve funding for an extended period of time like five years, that we are showing in the ACFER our committed costs that we have allocated? And with the understanding that in the next budget cycle, it may not be committed because we may not be able to afford it. But isn't that a number we wanna know?
That, that's not the purpose of GASB fifty-four, um, commit, committed, um.
So we wouldn't do it through this?
No.
So in other jurisdictions, committed would be used for what?
Well, like for example, let's say, um, let's say we had a, a large dam that was operated by the county. And, uh, we want to, uh, increase the height of the dam. We, the board could take action to, uh, commit, uh, general fund balances for that specific project. And because it's committed, the C A O cannot, uh, cannot, uh, direct those funds to go anywhere else. It takes formal action by the board to move that commitment.
So that would be true in a reserve scenario. If we made the reserve policy is to have X amount of money from the general fund going into the reserve, that money could not be moved. Didn't the prior boards take action like that and wouldn't that be a committed cost? I mean, a commitment that would show here in the?
Well, um, working off memory.
So, so I, I can't, I apologize. I can't remember the specific details, but we did, um, originally report that fund balance policy, those amounts as committed. But through review, the external auditors determined that the policy did not sufficiently, sufficiently put constraints, um, for it to qualify as committed. So they, um, thought it was more appropriate to put those as assigned fund balances.
So maybe a future conversation that we should be having, just throwing it out there, is the policies that we put in place and ensuring that those policies meet the outside auditor's requirements for wording to ensure that committed costs like roads that we have committed money to and we're, we're able to see it in the ACFER. It's not just a budget, it's a commitment. Am I, am I getting this wrong?
Generally, commitments also require another regulatory body to, that you're making the commitment to. Like for example, the landfill. There is a, there is a, uh, the state, uh, requires us to, uh, requires the county and the city to, uh, to provide closure, post-closure, um, dollars, and if not dollars, bonds, uh, to meet that commitment. Those are, those are committed costs. Of course, that's not in the, you know, general fund, but, um, that's the kind of, that's really what commitment is. It's, it's really through, uh, the county and a regulatory body uh, making, uh, making an official, uh, commitment.
Okay.
For roads would be really is assigned. The, the board takes, assigns the general fund dollars that were unassigned, uh, to the assignment of, of the roads.
So that would be under the blue?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just making sure I understand this, cause when I see the word commitment, that's commitment, not just restricted or assigned, but it, it's a committed cost, uh, for whatever period of time. So the next question I had is, um, are we looking at restricted and I guess it would be assigned, where we have like trusts? Are, is the administration and the budget looking at where all of these, these, I'd say committed, but restricted and assigned funds are and have a clear understanding of what these funds can be used for? And ensuring that departments are using the funds appropriately, which in the ACFER and the whole purpose of the outside audit is to make sure that that's being done. But that we're budgeting and not paying for these things out of, I know we've talked about this before, not paying for it out of the general fund. That we're paying for it out of restricted funds, um, or assigned funds. When we're going into a budget severity, the level that we're in right now, knowing exactly what we can and can't use funds for and having departments understand that we need everyone on board of understanding all their trusts and their restricted or assigned fundings. And can we utilize that? It's, it's, it's not always for ongoing, but for one-time cost, whatever it may be. Just, just wanting to make sure that that information is out there, that before going to the general fund, we're looking at those other funds. So, um, those are my only comments and
That's actually a very good point, especially as we're entering into the budget. That these, these trusts that are part of the, you know, individual departments, like sheriff's trust, uh, you know, they, you know, they, they have, uh, money in those trusts. And so they decide, well, you know, I'm gonna use, um, I'm gonna use those trusts for these specific purposes and they put it in the budget. So if they do that, it's incumbent upon, um, you know, administer, as we administer the budget, that those funds, if, if those intended purposes are actualized, that there's, that there's transfers out of that trust into the general fund to pay for those costs, even though the general fund may have fronted those costs. But that's, that's part of the job of, of ensuring that, uh, the general fund is getting everything it's supposed to be, be receiving.
And this is where I feel like as a body, we should maybe start to have conversations with departments about what are their trust accounts? What are their fund balances in their trust accounts? What are the purposes of these trust accounts? As you know, you, there are, there are trust accounts that are out there that you can use for specific things that will relieve the pressures off of the general fund. But if we're not all looking at that as a group and each department, it, it, it just eats away the general fund.
And I, and that's a very good point. And I wanna add to that. Our administration, our analysts are meeting with department heads. And we have some of the department here, um, that can attest, we are going through line by line, addressing if any other projects they have planned can be paid out of the trust and, and we are bringing those up with each department and it, and it has been part of the conversation through this budget process.
And we have to understand that departments do have long-term plans for those funds. So sometimes, you know, maybe you may have a good chunk of money in one of these. But if they have a long-term plan of what that's going to cover, that needs to be known too. I mean, it, it's just making sure that we're looking at all of these areas. And I feel like that's the gray area that we never really can see without being experts like you are in auditing and in administration. So I am not a finance expert. I just kinda wanna make sure that we know what we don't know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of quick things. The, I just wanna come back to this, uh, Hall of Records, Old Courthouse. So six point seven million dollars recovered from insurance. C A O Ring mentioned that we essentially have about four hundred thousand dollars left from the six point seven. So we've spent roughly six point three million dollars on cleanup, uh, relocation. So we've spent roughly $6.3 million on cleanup, uh, relocation and restoration?
Yes. So part of the, um, expense to that was there was asbestos in that building, so that had to be remediated. That was an additional cost, um, that was paid through, through insurance. So that kind of elevator.
Is that the restoration?
Yeah, that's the restoration.
Okay.
They had to remediate it. They had to remove it.
Do we have any rough ballpark of, is the building usable now?
No, it's still, it's still, will need to be reconstructed. Um, that was just the cleanup part. It's very expensive, um, obviously to clean up. And then they have to have structural, you know, engineers come in to make sure that the integrity of the building is still good. So we are still in, we are in the phase now of finishing up the restoration payment. There was some, um, additional payment that had to be, um, um, vetted through, that is being audited through the outside auditors that insurance uses. And then when that payment is done, then we'll start on the next phase, which will be reconstruction.
And do we have any, as long as we're on this, any rough ballpark of what additional dollar months we might get for the reconstruction?
I don't at this time, but we, again, that'll be the very next step of the process for the old courthouse.
Okay. And then as far as, um, committed versus uncommitted, I mean, I think we're learning this year, we got some areas we need to clean up and how we're budgeting, the methodology. Um, I like to address, uh, whatever is deemed as necessary in the county policy to ensure that fund balances essentially reserves are showing as committed or whatever designation is necessary to ensure that they're absolutely off limits for operations without explicit board approval, public transparency, um, and to also show that road projects are showing as assigned, if that's the most relevant category, to ensure that those dollars are absolutely off limited. And we've got to do a better job of delineating our pots of money, whether it's departmental budgets, reserves, capital, um, roads. If we make commitments to these areas, they shouldn't be just, uh, meshed in with other pots of money, general larger pots of money. We really need to do a better job of being more specific. And I don't think this is necessarily on the auditor, I think as the county operations, we need to do a better job of having more clarity in our budget. When we make commitments, we are making commitments. And, um, our reserve policy, I'm confused by the outside auditor making this determination because the reserve policy is pretty explicit. I don't pretend to be an auditor, but it's pretty, it's not pretty explicit, it's as explicit as you can be, that we are going to be at these percentages by these years. So I'm a little dumbfounded as, as far as how they could make, make the determination that those aren't necessarily committed.
You know, uh, at the, uh, at the next audit committee meeting, we're going to have the new auditor, Brown Armstrong, come in. Lindsay Zimmerman is the managing partner for that, uh, audit firm. And, uh, this question can be brought before, uh, could be asked by the external auditor. Hey, this is how, um, I barely handled that, um, you know, that designation for fund balance. How would you do it? Um, because you know, this is, this is the goal of the board to segregate it out so that it's not mixed up.
Great. And then the only other thing I wanted to clarify, you mentioned $16 million in aid from other governments, state and federal for road capital projects. I believe that's largely bridge projects. I know we have gas tax money in the two, two, three million dollar range, but we don't have, I just want to, for public purposes, they don't think that we had $16 million in?
Yeah, no, that's definitely the bridge projects.
Bridge projects, okay. Thank you, that's all I have. Anything supervisor?
You're just making my brain kind of spin right now with some of your comments and, and I, I'm sorry, Joe Paul, I, I, I don't mean to kind of put you on the spot, just help me understand a little more here. If, if we're talking about jurisdictional commitment, when we're talking about the committed category and we're committing to, like the example you gave, the landfill, wouldn't a jurisdictional commitment also be like a commitment to another jurisdiction like the city of Hollister for fire services? Wouldn't that, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around committed in a sense that we have a contract with another jurisdiction and how are we managing those commitments? And I think the chair said it beautifully, we have to start looking at the procurement and encumbering of our funds, not just at the budget level, but at the overall financial level of where our commitments are. And having that conversation with the new outside auditors and being able to ensure that if an outside auditor is changing the definition of what the board directed and thought was happening, it should come back to the board so that we understand that the outside auditors aren't in agreement with the wording that we had and we need to address it. Because I think we, we all agree, we need better financial controls and I'm really, I look at the Act for as like the little bible and holy grail because you have your budget versus your actuals. And have we been looking at fund balances? I know we sat down for a long period of time, Supervisor Satello and I sat down with you and asked a lot of questions about the Act for. Have we identified where all the fund balances are that are not being identified as money available for the board to utilize in a budget? For example, there was $800,000 in an account that has been there forever. It, it's not assigned to anything. Are we looking at that and making sure that out of all of these fund balances, that there is a clear picture for the people that are working on our budgets of understanding what we have and what we don't have? I have more questions than answers, so I appreciate you guys being here and presenting this. Outside auditors, any suggestions that they can bring forward that give us more transparency with the public and understanding? Because when I look at this and there's nothing committed, I'm looking at it from an accounting aspect, not from a financial, uh, auditor's aspect. So whatever we can do to start looking at the budget that way with, um, commitments would be wonderful.
Well, um, one of the things that I'm, I'm working with admin and budget, uh, is to kind of narrow down, um, we know what fund balance is as of June 30th, 2024. We've had several months, I think we're in May now, so we need one more month, uh, before the fiscal year end. That fund balance of June 30th was used, at least partially, uh, to balance the budget of 24, 25. So the job is how much? What are net revenues going to roll forward to in, in, in that fund balance? They're, they're going, I guarantee you, they're going to be negative because they use fund balance. And so the, the real question is how much? And that's, that's what the, that's what our next, um, project is right now.
And I understand that and I mean, I even went through some of my notes from last year, which you clearly stated when you did a prior presentation, that fund balance is used to balance the budget. I mean, it was one of the, the statements you made, I wrote it out and, but if we don't understand our committed cost of what we've encumbered that goes over multiple budget years, we really aren't controlling where our committed costs are. That's the meat that I want to get down to is can we say we know where all of our contract commitments are and how much it is each year for our budgets? Or is it just what departments are putting in their budgets and budgeting for?
It, it really is only what they anticipate spending in the current year or in the projected new fiscal year. That's, that's all that we can ask the departments to do. Uh, if they have an existing contract, they can enter a purchase order. That purchase order, where an encumbrance system will encumber those funds out of the budget and you know exactly how much they have left over. In fact, July 1st is when we are, um, you know, basically requiring every department to, uh, to, uh, use a P O for those amounts that they expect to use in the, in the current fiscal year.
And I get?
Not multi-year.
I get that. Contracts are up here, multi-years. One single source, one single database that tells us where all of our contracts are and what the amounts are, so that we know what's committed and uncommitted across multiple years. Purchase orders are to say how much you're paying and drawing down off of that contract. And that is only a snapshot for one year.
That's right.
We need to have the control at the contract level across multiple years. And I don't see that, it's what we've been working on with the procurement policy, that's where we have to get. We cannot just work off of budget by budget, fiscal year by fiscal year and understand what our future committed costs are if we do not have contracts across all of their lifespan and then being able to have this body say, we can't afford it. So we're going to have to cut some contracts.
So, um, recall that every department submits their budget. They submit their budget, how much they're going to, how much they're committed to use in their specific contracts in their departments. That's in the budget. Once the budget is approved, uh, the, the department should be entering P Os for those specific contracts, what they anticipate to use this year. If they have a five-year contract for $50,000 a year and this is, you know, year two, then they, they're going to use 50,000 in the current year and they know that, hey, they, they're going to have this contract for the next three years, maybe. Because maybe they decide, you know what, we, you know, we want to opt out of this contract, we want to go with a different vendor. And that's happened. We, we did it with, uh, audit services. We were, uh, we were four years into a five-year contract and, uh, quite frankly, I wasn't pleased with the auditor and, uh, we went out and, uh, and recruited a different auditor and, uh, we terminated that contract.
And I completely understand the budget system with the P O and the procurement of the, that year's budget. But as a body, we have to also know what are those committed costs that we've approved for the future, whether we're going to cancel those contracts or not, because how do we know if we're going to cancel them if we don't even know what the remaining amounts are on those contracts? My point, and I don't want to labor this anymore, is that we have to know more than just the committed cost for this year. We have to understand the commitments that this board approves when contracts are granted. Cause it, one snapshot, one year is not going to solve our fiscal problem in the future.
So really for that kind of information, that level of control, you really are asking for, uh, the, you know, admin and budget office for a multi-year contract, uh, excuse me, budget, for a multi-year budget. Because in the multi-year budgets, you could enter those contract amounts that are existing of to, you know, to, uh, you know?
I'm, I'm not going to labor this anymore, I don't agree. I, I feel that if contracts are put in the system and you draw down each year, you're going to have a balance on that contract that you should be able to run a report on. You should be able to run across the county how much money is committed in contracts versus how much has been drawn down through those, those fiscal years in P Os.
Um, we, our, our system is not robust enough to do that. I'm, I'm just being honest with you. There are systems that can do that, but, uh, our little E R P system, you know, that costs us, uh, you know, it was less than $300,000. Uh, you're talking about a system that we'd like, uh, it's, it's a system that, uh, I think, I think the quote was 3.8 million dollars for, for, um, for, you know, the, that, that type of system that can have that kind of control.
Well, I would really like the staff to look at that because the E R S, E R P system, this conversation was seven years ago when we got the E R P system or more. And in putting contracts in that system, there was an ability to put the amounts and then draw down through the purchase order process and being able to track it without having to buy a purchase, a, a contract module. So if that's not the case anymore, uh, it, it's my belief that without control over contracts and the approval continuously happening at this level, we, we do not have control over where our long-term expenditures are. Thank you, Joe Paul, sorry to be a debater.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I just want to clarify, um, the fund balance use, uh, you mentioned that fund balance was used to balance the budget, really kind of underscores the, the flaw in the methodology that's been used in the budget. It really underscores the flaw in, uh, the vacancy budgeting approach that we've been taking because yes, fund balance was used to balance the budget, but it was under the impression that, uh, that the, the adopted budget was never the expected budget. And that's ultimately the problem that we have. We should be budgeting more accurately for what we're expecting and not playing this guessing game anymore. And that's a big reason why we have to get rid of vacancy budgeting because vacancy budgeting means you inherently are playing a guessing game throughout the year with your budget. You can't accurately project costs versus revenue when you have a, a robust vacancy rate and you're doing it intentionally, basically. And, uh, again, it's kind of brings it all full circle to me. Um, and I also think, uh, that generally the board needs more specific data going forward. And I, I think that's something that we'll have to address. Uh, you know, I remember, I'll just say, I remember when I was in my old days, I'd watch city council meetings and, uh, the late, great Robbie Scatini would talk about how he went through all the financials, line by line. And I was just amazed at the level of detail that they were given. And we do not see this anywhere near this level of detail. I want to see more detail going forward. It's one of those things we will need to address. I think more data on specific costs, more data on contractual expenditures and, um, and how those compare with budget projections. And it brings me back to something we've been discussing at the ad hoc, which is that we need to codify and make it an actual formal policy that we will absolutely be requiring quarterly budget updates going forward without any discretion possible. We have not had them and, um, it's been, it's, it's playing into the uncertainty that we're facing now. Thank you. That's where the flask is.
I was just going to say, it, it was down to the detail of gas. And, um, we had many evenings going through the, the budget and it's kind of one of the things that surprised me right away when I got here. It's like, how can I know where we're going with this because I don't have information? And I'm learning about the process. So I understood you have another process. But that process eventually has to be understandable to the public and to all of us to make those long-term decisions because sometimes wishful thinking gets you in trouble real quick. Um, we're doing great, so let's spend money. And the next year, we don't have the money and then we start talking about layoffs and everything else. So I understand your department really has a good understanding of this, but what I'm learning, I think many of the departments don't. And I heard you say you, you give them advice, um, to help them sort through their budgets. But I think it's really going to be important in the future to be absolutely clear that they do understand what's going on. Um, we talked about some of the grants, making sure we're allocating correctly those dollars because we, if we don't, we find ourselves losing money real quick and for the public. You know, we have people coming in here, spreading misinformation about $20 million disappearing. Well, it never disappeared. They just don't know where to find it. I'm talking about the problem, 172, the funds. And, and again, it, this allows people to do these types of things and then people start claiming, well, there's money here, so that belongs to us. Budget really is, how do you, how do you know where you're at? And as was mentioned, when we went through our budgets quarterly, we saw if there was an uptick in a department and where that was. So we could zero in on it and address it right away. So the point, by the time we got to May, June, we knew exactly where we were at financially. Even the last numbers haven't come in, just because we're so close on all the other quarters. So it's important. So if we're going to need a new program to get us there or whatever it's going to take, I, I think, um, we need to get there sooner than later. And I've, again, I'm, as stressful it has been, I see the light coming in, in a positive way for us as we get through this. And I think it's just from this point on, we can look at it as something where we're talking about this every quarter and running through those numbers and hearing from all of you.
This, a lot of it is an accounting issue, we're getting through it, we're going to work through it. I will suggest if it's possible to give consent to bring back a proposed resolution to require quarterly budget updates if there's that, um, support from the board. So we have that direction. Is there anything else on this?
No, that was, uh, concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you. We did do public comments that would take us to, uh, three-point D, which is other post-employment benefits, OPEB PowerPoint presentation. which is other post-employment benefits, OPEB PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Must have been spooling. Okay, so the next item is on other post-employment obligations, OPEB. And it has to do with the actuarial evaluation that we received. It was kind of a mid, mid biannual evaluation that we asked that the actuary perform to have more up-to-date numbers. So just a little bit of history. OPEB, how did it get created? Well, this resolution is the reason why you have OPEB obligations now. Back in 93, the board committed to, to basically join in the Pemca, which at the time required that a dollar be, you know, be put towards each employee. But that annually, it would increase, it would increase annually by 5%. And basically, if you're a CalPERS agency and you have healthcare through CalPERS, you are obligated as part of the Pemca. It's, you know, for a brief period of time, the county was not with CalPERS. We were five years with a different insurance carrier. Honestly, we were not obligated under the Pemca because it's not CalPERS. But that board, those boards did, did continue the obligation even though, even though in those, those five years. Okay, so, you know, from 2014 to 2023, the employee healthcare contributions, this is what we're doing. $550 for an active, two parties, $1050, and families were $1350. Retirees who are eligible for Medicare, they receive 70% of that, of that contribution to be used towards their healthcare. Because healthcare is less expensive for retirees because Medicare is picking up some of that. So now, including last year, the contributions went up to 750 for an active, two parties, $1,250, and families are $1,550. This, these amounts are for all active employees and classic retirees, not tier, excuse me, tier-two retirees. In addition, this is kind of unrelated to the OPEB, but it is, it is a, an instrument that the board passed to help defray some of the cost of healthcare. It's a healthcare reimbursement arrangement, HRA, which is not part of the county's cafeteria plan. And these are additional amounts that the county pays on their behalf. And, you know, basically, any sort of benefits not in a cafeteria plan, retirees are not eligible for. So just to kind of give you an idea of what the, you know, what the total cost is. So you have an employee-only plan, which I think is $1050. And it, oh, $10, $13, $70. The county contribution is $750. The HRA is $125. And the employee monthly share is $138.70. Biweekly, that's $69.35. Much more manageable for our employees. And, you know, this, the same, this same type of thing, arrangement is with the employee plus one monthly and the family plans. So in 2021, the county, the county basically went back to CalPERS for healthcare. And therefore, we were obligated again under the Pemca. But this time, the Pemca allowed for the county to create two tiers. One was a classic member, which was everybody who was, you know, had been longtime county employees. And the other were specific counties, employees hired after specific dates. This year, 2025, the county is committed to pay $158 per month to any retirees subject to the tier-two requirements. So here's the, you know, here's the list. SEI employees hired after October 1st, 2013, they're, they're tier-two. So they get, you know, basically $158 a month. And that changes every year, by the way, the $158, the Pemca minimum. So you can see here the other departments that are, that have a tier-two plan as well. So getting into the, GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, has GASB 74 and 75 that basically prescribes how we deal with OPEB. And that supersedes our GASB 43, 45, which we, you know, the county was subject to when we initiated the OPEB pre-funding. So what's the, what's the county required to do under, basically, under GASB 75? Valuation measures the net OPEB liability associated with OPEB benefits and determines actually determined contributions for fiscal, for two fiscal years. That's actually an add-on that we have to pay for. And we ask for that so that the budget office has a target number, how much to put in the budget for any cost associated with OPEB, service cost, basically. The, the actuarially determined contribution represents the, the target contribution for the county's OPEB plan to be compliant with 75. The county's actuary also computes the implicit subsidy, which is a component of the ADC. And implicit subsidy is nothing more than a actuarially determined cost of how much more active employees are paying in their premiums because we have retirees sharing healthcare with, with the actives. And so they, the actuary computes that implicit subsidy. And as I mentioned, it's a component of the actuarially determined contribution. And of course, the, the big reason why we, we have to have the GASB 75 report from our actuary is that we use it for reporting in our act for. I kind of talked about the implicit subsidy. So here's the, kind of the meat and potatoes of an actuarial report. So total liability, the first line, as of June 30th, $35 million. The, June 30th, '25, it's, you know, $34 million. So it's, it's gone down a little bit. The actuarial value of the assets, that's how much, well, these guys are going to talk about when, you know, the next presentation, how much they're managing on behalf of the county. So when you subtract that, you have a net OPEB liability. And our net OPEB liability as of June 30th, 2025, is 90, is, is $2.7 million. Basically, the actuary computes that our funded ratio is 92.2%. Being, you know, this, basically, the benefit is fully, is almost fully funded. One of the reasons why the, the actuarial value of the assets are so much, especially because in 2009, we started off with a small contribution of a little bit over $2 million, and it's grown considerably, is because of the investment strategy that the county employed, which is a growth strategy. You know, we started with very little, and we had a huge, a huge liability. That liability at that time was over $40 million. And, that's it?
No, go ahead. Yeah, that's just to give you a barometer.
Okay.
Ten minutes.
I was going as fast as I could.
Go, go ahead, Joe Paul. Explain your dear do thing.
So, you know, because the actuary uses a growth strategy, that really benefits the county because they anticipate higher returns because they have a growth strategy. And that allows our actuary to use a fairly aggressive discount rate, which is a 7.10 there in, you know, for June 30th, 2025. That's a big deal. Because all the liabilities that you see in OPEBs, the determinant of those liabilities, one determinant, which is very, you know, is, is pretty much the, the main determinant, is the discount rate. If the county does not agree to use a policy of, of funding the actuarially determined contribution, the, the actuary looks at that and says, well, under the, under the actuary rules, they must use a more conservative rate for the discount rate. And the conservative rate, you know, is basically the risk-free rate, is, is around 4%, 4.19%. And that really increases liabilities for, for counties that aren't adopting the ADC. As you see in this report, as of June 30th, there are 520 active participants and 248 retirees. Sorry about the size of this print there. The, the, what I wanted to bring up here is, this is kind of a year-by-year comparison of liability and net change in liability and our plan fiduciary net position. If you, if you, we'll go to, for example, 2021. In that first column, in that first right-hand column, the total liability at the beginning of the year was $28 million. By the end of the year, the total OPEB liability was 30, almost $37 million. And there's a reason for that. And the reason is, is that at that time, this board had decided to not fund the ADU. And so because they didn't fund the ADU, the actuary used a much more, a risk-free discount rate. And so that's led to this, you know, critical jump in the liability. But in spite of that, at the end of that year, our, our net OPEB liability was only $10 million. And I say only. And, but a large part of that has to do with our, is, it has to do with that, with that discount rate change. So the, the, the OPEB fund at that time was funded at 72.1%. Then the very next year, dramatic, dramatic change. Yes, the, the liability, the 30, 30, almost $37 million is the beginning liability of the year. But if you look at the end of the year in 2021 of total OPEB liability, that's same, it's that same number. You'll see that, you'll see that the net OPEB liability changed. And that it changed by $11.6 million. So the total liability at the end of the year was $25 million. And the reason for that is simply because we changed discount rates. The board adopted the policy of fully funding the ADU. Okay. Currently, in 24, 25, the, basically, the, the net OPEB liability at the end of the year is $34 million. And then we have net investment income in that same column of $4.4 million. We withdrew benefits for retiree healthcare of $2.4 million. And those, you know, basically reduced the amount of funds available for investment. But even in spite of that, the net OPEB liability at the end of the year was only $2.7 million. And that's why, and that's on a covered employee payroll of $43 million. So we're 92%, 92.2% funded in the OPEB plan. So in, in this, in this schedule right here, it just, to illustrate the actuarially determined contribution that needs to be used in 25, 26 in the budget. This is what, this is what I, what we ask for by our actuaries so that we can have additional information so that they can target an amount in the budget. And, you know, this kind of shows a comparative of what, what we were doing in previous years. You could see that in 21, 22, 22, 23, there was a zero actuarially determined contribution because the fund was super-funded at that time. But let me go back because of the main, the main topic is that what happened in, in 23, 24 that caused our net OPEB liability to increase so much? That is related to, directly related to the additional amount that the county has paid on behalf, on behalf of employees of $200 per medical plan and retirees. And so just $200 created this huge $6.5 million change in benefit terms of, you know, for, for retiree healthcare. I just wanted to point that out to show the board that it's, it's very expensive to change that contribution. So my recommendations is to, as we have been, continue drawing retiree healthcare costs directly from, from our trust and to continue to fund the recommended actuarially determined contribution as our official employer funding policy.
Thank you, Joe Paul. We'll go to public comment and we'll bring it back.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board. Anyone want to start in particular? Otherwise, we'll start with Supervisor Velasquez.
Thank you. Happy to see it's at 92%. I was, I was a little worried about that. These are the things that scare me. As you pointed out, the change of the $200 can be drastic over a period of time. So any recommendations you have other than you're talking about here that we can help?
Well, in the next, in the next presentation, those recommendations will really come out because of the action items on, on that agenda transmittal is really what I'm looking for the board for direction on. But that's, that's pretty much it as far as our OPEB policy.
Thank you. I think, again, I think it's one of the most important things we could be discussing because we could find ourselves in serious, as communities did back in, I forget what years it was, if people found themselves in financial desperation by not planning or not understanding these numbers.
In 2009, we were, we were very, very much affected by the economy and the budget was, you know, in tatters. But the board took, you know, affirmative action to, for pre-funding and committed to doing it in the future. And because of that, we enjoy the, the fruits of their efforts.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to go back. So thank you.
Very much. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Supervisor Coro?
So I, I tried to do some research on, kind of county by county, on OPEB liabilities. And there, there are some counties, you know, that are, and, and agencies that are fully funded. Would you consider us, we're not fully funded this year. We were overfunded at one point in the past. Would, would you consider us in a very good position when it comes to our funded liabilities compared to others? Because in what I could research online, there are some agencies that are, you know, 98% liability, some 160% liability. So I'm just curious because in the scheme of things, where do we rate in, in California, just in California, when it comes to counties? Is that something that you guys have?
One of the things that perhaps the gentlemen here from PARs and PFM, they can, you know, they can touch on that question because they do perform these, you know, they're the fiduciaries for these irrevocable trusts that, that other counties and agencies, you know, use.
That would be great. The, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because it, it was, it's very hard to kind of understand for the public, where are we when you say these things? This is very complicated stuff. But our policy has put us in a very good position. Is it your recommendation that we continue funding to the level that we're funding when we are at such a risk of a financial budget crisis? Or are we in a good spot where we could, you know, what are our options in this area? If any?
I think, I think the last time that we decided not to do the ADU, I, I demonstrated how the liability increased substantially. We went from, from, you know, being almost fully funded to 72% funding. And that's where we're at, at pension right now. We're, you know, we're, our funded level is, is not good, not good. But anything in the 90s is pretty significant, pretty significant, in general. But, you know, I'll let, I'll let them speak to that. I, yeah, I just think that not, not following the, the, you know, fully funding the AD, ADU is, is a mistake because we end up paying for it in the future actuarial evaluation with higher liabilities.
And I completely see that, and I agree with that completely. I'm not saying not fund. That's not where I'm going. I'm saying is the policy that we have on the ratio that we are funding, is that overly aggressive in financial hard times? Or could it be limited? Because it's all based on the board's policy that we created in funding. I'm assuming it goes back to that 93 resolution where it was $1 per employee, per month, per employee plus five?
That created just, that created the commitment.
That created the commitment. Okay. Because where I'm trying to get at is, are, are we in a position where we have any options of what level we're funding this for the next fiscal year? Or do we have to fund, fund it at this level in order to maintain?
Well, here's the kind of the bad news. The bad news is, yes, we're in a position right now, but it's going to make, it's, we're going to dig a hole for ourselves if we don't do this. And so it's going to be hard getting out of that hole. And to contribute to digging that hole, a recommendation that I am making along with our fiduciaries is that we lower risk because it's so, it's funded 92%. We don't want us, you know, why would, we don't need to assume the kind of risk that we did before because our strategy was a growth strategy and it's a higher risk. We want to lower manage that risk a little bit so that, so, you know, so that in the event of a real downturn, our fund isn't, you know, devastated, which, you know, can definitely happen. So
Because all of this is based on the market and where our revenue projections are coming from. And if the market, if we're, if we're going into this very conservative and the market takes a big leap, we could get to another 120% funded.
It can. That's exactly right.
And, and that's wonderful. Great. But if we're having to lay off people and we go to 120% funded, but at the other side, we have the risk of if we underfund and we dig a hole that we can't get out of, and we get down like into the 60s percent of funding, what's the risk and, and is our policy keeping us stable? Or are we looking at this and, and, I mean, you guys are the experts. I am so not. This is not my area. I don't want your job. But how do we ensure that we're being conservative, but we're not being so conservative that we're hurting ourselves at employee levels? Where they're being hurt because of whatever freezes or layoffs or cuts?
I think your, your questions are really pertinent to their, their presentation.
Then I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Do we need a formal on the recommendations? Any sort of formal?
I, I'd like to, by, by minute order at this time, adopt that policy as fully funding the ADU by the board.
Do you need to take a vote on that? As we entertain a motion to approve the recommendation?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So I feel like this is kind of a big decision for us to make without a full presentation of our entire budget. I, I'm really uncomfortable right now making this until I have full knowledge of what our budget is because I feel like we've hit the tip of the iceberg. So I would prefer to hold off on this until maybe on the 29th. I understand the 29th will be our next budget hearing and we can maybe dive into things a little bit more. So I, I guess I would just like to hold off, but that'll be up to the rest of you.
Anything further?
My only question would be, instead of saying fully funded, if we said, if we're at 92% and we say we're going to fund at 95%, is that an option for us?
No, no, no. The funding is, is not, you know, that's, that's a determinant of, of liability and a determinant of assets. You know, what are the assets producing, the investments that have increased? That's the only determinant of the
Because what we're, what we're committing to in this vote is that we would have to commit that, what was that dollar amount? That you said?
Yeah, it's the
Two point, I wrote it down. $2.7 million?
1.132925.
I, I'm just concerned only because if there
Keep in mind that half of that is really paid by the subvented funds.
Okay.
Further? Supervisor Zinger?
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, I think Supervisor Coro, I think, correct me if, if I'm wrong here. You're asking if we could just pull back a little bit, basically like if we have a, you see it like if we have a healthy reserve, we don't need to keep adding the same amount if we're already good kind of thing, right? You want to pull back a little bit slightly?
I mean, that's a nice easy way of saying it. You know, if we're in financial hardship now, if we ease off a little, does that allow us some flexibility with our fiscal issues? And then we get our fiscal house in order a little more and then we fund more in the next fiscal year? I mean, is that even an option? I don't know enough to even know if that's an option.
Well, actuarial reports, what they do is they use, you know, they use these standards. It's like accounting, but it's accounting on steroids to, to be able to produce, hey, what's, you know, what is that actuarially determined liability? You know, what's the, you know, what is the, you know, how, how is that actuarially determined contribution going to, going to be determined? They use actuarial standards that if we deviate from a policy of saying, hey, we're funding, fully funding, then they say all bets are off. Now we use a very conservative, risk-free discount rate and that increases our liabilities and therefore will increase our, our next year's actuarially determined contribution.
Okay. So there's really no way of, of, of having any, any relief in this area?
Not in that manner, no. There is, what, what they're going to talk to you in a, in a minute, there is a way to to maintain the, basically the level of risk that we're doing right now, keeping the growth strategy and therefore taking a risk that, hey, our investments are going to grow. But that's something that when you have a 92% funded plan, probably not the most prudent thing in the world to do unless the board is considering increasing contributions in the future. And then that's a whole difference, you know, then all bets are off on that.
Okay. So, so I'm assuming their item is a separate item from this item?
Yes.
Would it, could we ask the board, would you consider, can we hear the next item before we vote on this and come back to this after that item?
Sure.
Just so I can educate myself more. This is very complicated and, and I have the same concerns that Supervisor Satello has. And maybe your presentation will answer all those questions and then I'll be able to just do this and feel all better about myself.
All right. Let's, if, if there's no objection from the board, we'll move the recommendation until after the next slide. And that would take us to the next presentation, which is 3.0, presentation on PARs and from PFM Asset Management. And other items.
Thank you. At this point in time, good afternoon, board, chair. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Matt Spooner. I am a senior consultant with PARs, which is Public Agency Retirement Services. And we also have Andrew here with PFM Asset Management. We are going to be presenting on the 115 trust, the PARs 115 trust that the county is involved in. And what our goal is to do here today is to keep things informative and to keep things simple and to also address any questions that you have after our presentation. Now, this initial slide may look relatively unimportant, but there is actually a secret power in this, which is Andrew. When you work with PARs, which you have been for many years now, within this 115 trust, you not only get our team at PARs that is helping you with your compliance and your day-to-day contact and serving at that role for you, but you get the expertise of an actual asset management house like PFM Asset Management and an individual like Andrew who's been doing this for many years, monitoring the markets and working within public agencies. So this is actually part of the team that we bring to the table. As you can see here, once again, when you're working within this trust that you have within PARs, this 115 team, we are the ones that serve as the record keepers at PARs. We're the ones that are making sure that this plan is compliant with local and state and, and government regulations. But we are not the only ones on this team. There are some things that we can't do that we have other experts doing for us. For instance, US Bank, they're the trustee. They're the ones that are holding the money in your trust. Then, as I mentioned before, you have an expert like PFM Asset Management that is monitoring and ultimately directing your investments within this trust. Now, let's go over some of the broad strokes of what your 115 trust actually is. One of the best ways to think about this, if you haven't thought about it in this way, is that your trust is like a savings account on steroids. It's like having a savings account that can be invested in the stock market and in equities. And one of the various benefits of having this type of a savings account is that there's flexible investing and it's a combination trust. And so this trust is for the purpose specifically of pre-funding pension obligations that the county has as well as your OPEB obligations. And there are two buckets and each of those buckets can have separate, unique investment strategies associated with them. So as Andrew takes a microphone here in a moment, and we're going to keep toggling on and off, you will see that your sub-accounts within this 115 trust actually have different investment strategies based on the nature of these sub-accounts. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to really get into the investments and their performance now. And then it's going to toggle back to me to talk about the specifics of your PRSP, your pension rate stabilization program. That's a pension side of your pre-funding trust and then the OPEB side of your pre-funding trust. So Andrew, it's all you.
I think we have to coach Matt in terms of the introduction on superpower. That's a new one. Hey, I think I heard the 10-minute Joe Paul buzzer a second ago. Do we have 10 minutes? If I do have a superpower, it will be the slow time.
Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. We'll, we'll, we'll play it as we go here.
Okay. Yeah. So the three topics we're going to be reviewing is, one, the reviewing of the options that are available to you for both the pension 115 trusts as well as the OPEB portfolio. Then I'm just going to give you a very brief update, just touch maybe 20, 30 seconds on, on performance for both plans. And then finally, just really facilitate a discussion in terms of the investment objective. And Supervisor Coro, maybe that will help the previous item that we have. Thanks. Yeah. And so do you have this in front of you, this, this presentation? Because it's, it's really small, micro font size. On page five, we have the five investment objectives that, that we offer our PARs clients. And they're ranked order in terms of risk and reward. And in the top row would have the more conservative investment objectives that, that we provide. In the upper left-hand corner, it's something we call conservative. I'll give you the, maybe the policy points to kind of give you a frame of reference in terms of risk and reward with respect to equities and fixed income ratio. Upper left-hand corner, conservative is going to be 15% equities, 85% fixed income. Moderately conservative there at the top middle is the one that actually the 115 trust is currently invested under. That policy point would be 30% equity, 70% fixed income. So usually you will see a very, you know, low volatile type of return stream from moderately conservative investment objective. But it's not to say that you can't find a period of time like 2022 when this was down about 13%. So it's not, it, it's not bulletproof, if you will, but usually it's going to be a pretty low volatile strategy. Upper right-hand corner, moderate, that's a 50/50 strategy, 50% equities, 50% fixed income. And then you get to the bottom, two pie charts, if you will. And here is really where maybe I would offer that, that some of our consideration and comments should be focused on in terms of the OPEB plan. Currently, the county is invested in the capital appreciation strategy, which is in the bottom right-hand corner. Capital appreciation represents 75% equities, 25% fixed income. It is a growth-oriented strategy. It, it is aggressive. Some would say highly aggressive, but for a long-term plan, a long-term focus where a multi-decade horizon is in the future, it certainly can be an appropriate strategy and, and it's one that I didn't hesitate to recommend to the county back in 2018, 2019, when we first began our relationship. I probably should have announced upfront, I've been the portfolio manager for both plans since inception for both the 115 as well as the OPEB. The capital, or the balance strategy there in the bottom left-hand corner, it's a little bit less aggressive, but it is still built for growth. It will still have a lot of volatility in a downward-moving market. For the first eight days of April, it was, it was no bowl of cherries or whatever that phrase is. It, it certainly, it certainly was impacted. And in the last 22 days of April, it, it went up very nicely. So, so there is a lot of volatility. So the consideration, I, I don't want, I don't want the board to think that, okay, well, if we go from capital appreciation to balanced, boy, we're really hunkering down in the basement. That's not the case. I mean, you're still going to be built for growth and there's still going to be some volatility. But the consideration really is, and Joe Paul, I think, said it really well, good grief. I mean, the actuary says you're about 92% funded as of, what, June 2020? Yeah, you know, breaking news, you know, we made $2 million since that point. And if we were to mark to market right now where we're at, we're probably about 98% funded. Not quite 100%, but, but, you know, the, the market's gone up a little bit. So this really represents a, a downshift and, or, yeah, downshift in risk. And so if any of you have had a clutch car, you're going from fifth gear to fourth gear. But you're still in fourth gear and you're going pretty fast, right? So that's the analogy that, that I would leave you with. Do I think it makes sense? Sure. If I was in your shoes, would I probably strongly consider it? You betcha I would. I wouldn't have had those discussions with Joe Paul over the last couple of weeks and months if I didn't think it was something important to bring to your attention. So that's a little bit of setting the table and So that's a little bit of setting the table in terms of the investment objectives that we offer. I'm gonna hand it back to Matt quickly to just kind of run through the actuarial evaluation, quick stats on the pension plan.
Perfect. Thank you, Andrew. So as I mentioned, your combination trust has two buckets. You can think of it in that way. One bucket is your Pension Rate Stabilization Program, that is your pension pre-funding program. And if you recall that last slide, there are five different strategies that can be involved in. This one actually is involved in our moderately conservative strategy. So this is a far less aggressive strategy than the capital appreciation one that you have for your OPEB pre-funding. And the reason why is that this is actually intended to be a rainy day fund for the county so that we're lowering the volatility of the investments so that should the county need it in a rainy day, you can actually tap into this pre-funding program to smooth out any obligations that you have that weren't budgeted for. And actually, this goes to Supervisor Caro's question that you had a few moments ago during Joe Paul's presentation. You can see here that even within your pension funding status, you're at a funding ratio as of your last valuation from CalPERS. These are CalPERS numbers, not PARs numbers, we're just transmitting them, but these are from CalPERS. You're at 70.6% funded. What we tend to see at PARs, and we work with hundreds of agencies across California and the country, is we tend to see 60 to 80% funding. So you're right in the middle of that range. Is that good? It's average. So you're not hurting from that standpoint, in our opinion. Could you be greater in this particular bucket? Of course you could be. But are you hurting, in our opinion? It's very much in keeping with what you would see within the vast majority of agencies that we work with throughout the state of California. And as you can see, once again, based on CalPERS numbers, your annual contribution amount will be going up nearly 30, you know, just over 34% in the coming years. And so having this as a rainy day fund, the ability to tap into a pre-fund in order to smooth out any obligations you have from the pension side is actually a very great thing and the type of strategy you're involved in right now is consistent with that. I'm gonna go over and go ahead and hand it back to Andrew to talk about performance.
And just quickly on page eight.
Yeah, well, quick question, there's 50 slides. How many are we actually going through?
14.
Okay, just go ahead.
And they might even bet the under on that, too.
Got it.
Yeah. On page eight, upper right-hand corner, since inception, this is the 30% equity, 70% fixed income strategy. Second column over from the right, 4.68% annualized rate of return since 2016. So a little bit over, a little bit over eight years of, of working together to, to support much of that return. The, the second row, domestic equity, once again, second column over from the right, 12.5%. I'm supposed to say past performance is not indicative of future returns. Well, I can tell you, I'm not gonna be getting you 12.5% annualized on equities on a go-forward basis. As well, though, fixed income. Fixed income, which is about two-thirds of the portfolio. If you look in the middle section, that middle blue row, fixed income, 1.75% annualized since November 2016. Past performance is not indicative of future returns. We're gonna be doing better than 1.75%. So, you know, we, we would expect on a go-forward basis, that 60 to 70%, that's in fixed income, to do much better than it has and equities to do a little bit less than 12%.
Thanks, Andrew. And now to get into that second bucket within your combination trust, the OPEB pre-funding side. And this actually supports what you saw from Paul within the previous presentation. This is just a slide based on your latest actuarial evaluation that we were able to get our hands on. It's basically showing that you're growing as a county as far as your headcount, as far as your number of employees, which then is going to translate into the next slide to see that there is this growth in the total OPEB liability. In large part, that's going to be due to that growth, that headcount and the, um, the contribution that needs to be made into their OPEB for that purpose. You can also see here, the fiduciary net position has also lowered and that's based on the withdrawals that have been taken out, the deposits, or I'm sorry, the, the dispersments that have been taken from this OPEB pre-funding trust in order to cover off the obligation. But as you can see here, there's also this bottom row, you can see here that, including the assets that we have been tracking at PARs, you're at 94.6% funded as far as your OPEB obligation, which once again puts you in fantastic position. And to Supervisor, you know, Caro, your point before, does that then mean that now is an interesting time to consider a potential shift in how you are investing those monies? And that's where I would then turn it back over to Andrew to talk about the performance and to talk about maybe how other counties who are of a similar kind of state as far as your, your funding level and your size are handling this type of question.
Yeah, first off, just closing the loop in terms of where you stand versus, well, not just counties, but, but cities, special districts. I think, you know, 95, 98%, whatever the actual number is, you're top of the class. I, I wanna say NAPA's in the hundreds, maybe? 160. I, I'd love to know who, who 160, because that would be really outsized out there. I mean, water districts. Water districts are usually the only entity that I come across that is, is at that level. But, yeah, you're, you're, you've done a fabulous job. And if we were to build a pie chart as to why that was, well, maybe PFM gets a little bit of the pie wedge, but it's really the, the county making your contributions, as Joe Paul said. I mean, that's why you find yourself in this envious position where you are right now. You know, just in terms of performance, upper right-hand corner, 8.2% annualized, same, same spiel I said a second ago, equities did really well, bonds didn't. Didn't matter, because this has 75% in the asset class that got over 12%. So, so that's why we, we've been able to generate a pretty nice return stream. I wanna go this way. I wanna do this, upper right-hand corner, you see 6.5% discount rate. Matt said that that is the, the, the actuarial numbers that we had prior to today's meeting, but Joe Paul had the breaking news in terms of the 2025 update, which, if you'll notice, I did. The discount rate is assumed to be 7.1%. Because you're, you know, at least going into the actuarials work, you had a 75/25 allocation. I wanted to go back to that first slide that I had on page five. And this, by the way, is the last slide that I will be looking at or presenting to you. If you look in the panels, each panel, and I'm, I'm gonna have you focus on the bottom row, capital appreciation as well as balanced. PFMAM puts out a five-year forecast and a 30-year forecast for investment returns. Capital appreciation, bottom right-hand corner, we would say that given a 30-year horizon, our, our forecast, our best guess is 7% annualized rate of return, pretty much right in line with that 7.1% target. Five-year horizon, a shorter period of time, 6.9%. To the left of it, balanced, 6.7%. 6.7% is our long-term forecast and then a five-year horizon of 6.5%. So 6.7 is within earshot of, or eyesight of that 7.1% target that Niheart is using. But if Niheart was very adamant and said, okay, well, you're gonna go to balanced, we're gonna take that 6.7 and we're gonna apply it into our, our actuarial supercomputer, more than likely, your, your liabilities go up a smidge, maybe a couple percent. Your ADC might go up a smidge. I don't think it blows out the budget, Supervisor Caro, but probably maybe goes up a little bit. So you need to be aware of that before making that decision. So the decision is really incumbent on, good grief, we're, we're in the 90th percentile, let's go from fifth gear to fourth gear. That, that's really the, the rationale that I would present to you. There's no reason why you can't stay in fifth gear. You can stay the course. It's been working really well and providing the equity markets behave and, and bonds give us a little bit more, it still can be a winning formula because you do have a multi-decade horizon still in front of you. So this is just maybe about risk. So with that, let me pause or... And let's initiate Q and A.
Great, we'll go to public comment, we'll come right back.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
We'll go back to the board, who wants to kick it off?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
All right.
Anxious, yeah.
Thank you. Um, okay, great. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. Uh, question, couple of questions here. So you're basically presenting as far as the OPEB, go one way, you have the balance or the, the, the current, the capital appreciation model, right? And you want a decision on that? You want a recommendation on that?
I believe item 3E says discuss and approve.
Okay. Got it. And I understand what you're saying about fifth to fourth gear. Personally, I wanna stay in fifth gear, seems to be working great. Not in favor of moving to the lower-risk balanced position personally. And then as far as the 115, the, the row above, the three circles right above, the same, same thing or are you asking, or is that?
It's, it's a good point, because I, I fail to admit a stance. I would say stay the course. Rainy day fund, you wanna have some umbrella or shelter in the rain, even though, I mean, 4.6 million, it probably represents about four to five months of an annual pension expense. And in terms of the rationale that, that you've provided us in terms of rainy day fund, I, I can't look you in the eye and say capital appreciation or balanced. It, it would have to be something on the top row and, and I think 30/70 kind of represents a nice balance of some conservatism, but a little bit of growth.
The moderately conservative pie that we have there. And you recommend just sticking with that one?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, yep, I'm fine with that recommendation, I appreciate that, I like that. But I was just giving my two cents right off the bat on the, the bottom row as far as not de-risking.
Who'd like to go next? Go ahead, Supervisor Caro.
Feel like it's a race, like we have a buzzer.
Yes.
Okay. Joe Paul, I remember when you would do these presentations and I would be in the audience sleeping. I'm sorry, I did not follow it to this level. I, my brain is spinning now, I wish I would have paid more attention. So with that little humor, uh, how is, after sitting through, thank you so much for your presentation, but after sitting through what we're looking at with our vacancies and we are at 16.2%, we have 103.5 vacancies in the county, we're talking about freezes, we're talking about potential removal of some of those positions. How does that calculate into, because you showed in your slide that we're growing, but in actuality now, we might not be growing? And how does that reduction in employee growth impact what your recommendations are?
Yeah, I like to pride myself on not ducking any question, but that, I would almost say that the, that's the actuary that, that needs to answer that que, or factor that, that variable into the, the 520 actives or whatever the, the number was. I think she or he needs to crunch the numbers on that one. I mean, I can intuitively say, well, if you have phantom employees that, that maybe are covered or maybe aren't, if they're not covered, or if they're not there, right, to cover them, I mean, maybe your liability's not as large as, as it possibly might be.
So that's kind of going to my question, is, are our current actuaries taking into account the fact that we don't have people in some of these positions? Or are we fully funding based on the positions that have been approved and budgeted?
No, it's, it's basically, we go off of actuals. The actual experience of, of, you know, each employee that's, you know, employed, retirees, all that information is provided to the actuary to be able to determine, you know, what is the, what's the liability associated with this benefit to these groups? And so it's, they're actual numbers, not budgeted.
Not, but, no, okay, that makes me, well, it's good and bad. I would love to have had you say that we were funding for our positions adopted, which means we're overfunding, which means then I could really support the reduction of funding, but because it's on actuals, I can't. Besides that, when you said the, the, we won't go as high as the 12.57, but we won't be as low as the 1.75 in that pension chart that you were showing, understanding that that's all based on market fluctuation and what risk we're picking?
No, that's based on the actual returns that you've received.
Those were actuals.
But, but it's also, but, but my opinion, though, fair, fair point. My opinion is, is based on what we, when, when I, when I showed you those estimated 30-year returns, that, that's not just Andrew Brown's returns, those are PFM Asset Management. So we, internally, we put out our long-term capital market assumptions and, and so in our assumptions, we would say, okay, well, domestic equities, more than likely get 7.2, 7.3%, something like that. Core fixed income, maybe call it 5, 5.1%. So 5.1% greater than 1.75 and, you know, 7.1, 7.2, much less than 12. So it's an opinion and maybe I, I offered it a little bit too, you know, easily.
That's okay.
But, but it is, it is certainly steeped in what our firm believes, capital markets will return going forward.
So I have no problem staying with the moderately conservative, because I think that's really truly the way we should go. My question, though, is when you talk about capital appreciation versus balanced, that would be the downshifting to fourth if we were gonna go to the balanced as opposed to staying in fifth gear and going to the capital appre, um, appreciation?
Stay.
Right? Do I have that right? Okay, so when you're looking at the expected returns, what, we're not looking at a cost contribution change if we stay at capital appreciation instead of downshifting? Or is there some sort of savings if we go to balanced that is like not calculated or is seen here?
I wouldn't think of it as savings. If, if your actuary was to revise their work based on, instead of 7.1, if they took our, you know, 6.7% is gospel, if they took that, your liabilities would go up a little bit and the ADC would go up a little bit.
Gotcha.
How much a little bit, they would have to answer that.
Gotcha. Okay, well, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for keeping it in simple terms.
Uh, Supervisor Velazquez?
Yeah, maybe Joe Paul on this one. Looking at the staffing, you have the older retirement plans that are more costly compared to the newer ones. Have you looked at those numbers and what, what percentage they're at? Pepper and?
Oh. You know, it's, it's in the, it's in the actuarial report that, that, those numbers I can get you, I, I don't have them available at this moment.
I think it's a very important part to understand here because how it changes.
It's still, it's still predominantly the majority of all retirees is classic members.
The classic?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because it's, you know, if you notice the, uh, the, you know, the...
What were the percentage, what was the percentage on those? What was her retirement package, is it 2.5? The classic plan?
For, for pension retirement?
Yeah.
They're, they're all, the 2% for the general unit and the safety unit was, you know, was 3, 3%.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm more a moderate guy right now. I think there's a lot of things going on right now that make me a little nervous. But I like driving in fifth gear, too.
If, if I may, and, and this is something that has not been explicitly stated yet, but I think it's important to know, just like now, the board is considering a potential change in strategy predominantly, if not solely, for the OPEB side of the trust. You could reconsider that next month, next year, a decade from now. The point being is that you're not locked in to a strategy when you're working with us as, as this team within your PARs 115 Trust. So our job as a fiduciary isn't to make sure that you are well-aware of what's happening within your trust so that you can make the best decision possible on behalf of the county. So should a decision be made today to downshift or to stay the course within your current strategy, that could change at any given moment based on the prerogative of the board. So really just keep that in mind, is that you're not locked in as today's evidence of. Thank you, Supervisor Satello.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna side with Supervisor Velazquez here, I'm very concerned about the volatility in particular. I mean, it's easy to say, stay in fifth gear a day after that's earned and right now is a very risky environment. And I, so I think at the very least, we need to go to balanced and look at whether to go to, so I think at the very least, we need to go to balanced and look at whether to go to moderate relatively soon thereafter.
Supervisor Zenger?
When you say go to moderate soon after...
I would like to just...
Oh, you mean go, go up?
I'd like to take a step back.
Balance to moderate.
For now, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. To go to balanced, I'd be open to moderate, but I just think a growth strategy in this particular environment is far too risky. I don't know if there's any other thoughts?
I, I agree, that's fine with me.
Supervisor Caro, Satello?
Do we have any idea what impact it would have on the budget? You said it would, it would be some...
Um, it won't have any impact for '25, '26. Where it'll have an impact, may have an impact, is the following year. But it won't, it won't change anything for, because we already have the actuarial determined contribution amount. That's, that's fixed. That's fixed. But it's, you know, it's based upon these assumptions. Well, the assumption changed. So that's going to, you know, that'll be reflected in the next evaluation.
Okay. Is there any consensus on, I mean, I've said where I'm at. I think balanced at least makes sense to go back one. Supervisor Zenger would like to stay at capital appreciation for OPEB. Is there any other?
I agree. I think we should be looking at balanced, possibly even moderate.
Supervisor Curl?
Joe Paul, where were you in your recommendations?
You know, Andrew and I have had several conversations. You know, we're recommending balanced strategy, just a, you know, one tick down from capital appreciation. But it's significant. It's a significant drop in risk that I think, given the level of fundedness, it makes sense for us to do it. Because we don't want to lose that corpus of our investment.
Okay, I could be fine with balanced.
Entertain a recommendation then? Is there somebody who wants to make a motion to lower the risk strategy to balanced?
So move.
I'll second.
First and second. Roll call please.
Supervisor Cur, um, Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
No.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Four one vote, motion passes.
And do we have, are we everyone okay with staying at the, it sounds like we want to stay at the other?
Yes, I wanted to, you know, take a formal action by the board to maintain that strategy for pension.
As stated, is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to maintain the current strategy for pension.
I'll second.
First and second. Roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
And then if we want to take a step back to the recommendations that were made in the prior presentation, if we could possibly pull that up again. You know, I had it here. To continue recommendations, continue drawing retiree healthcare costs from pars IRC 115 trust and continue to fund the recommended actuarial determined contribution as the official employer funding policy. I haven't said my piece, but I agree with the recommendation. I think we have to be fiscally responsible and I would agree with it. I don't know if there's anything others have further? Anything further? Is there, I'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. So move. First or second?
Second.
First and second. Roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for the work, the presentation, keeping us going here financially, all your work. That would take us to, is that it for that item, I believe?
Yes, that's. I got one more thing. In the next couple of weeks, I will be notarizing this in a new investment policy statement for the OPEB plan. That might make it your ways, so just I want to give you a heads up on that. And I'll also be revising the moderately conservative investment objective. The meat and potatoes of the document won't change, but we're still working on the 2016 document, which says Highmark Capital Management, which is our previous provider. So I'll be providing two updated IPSs for your review and signature.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We have one last item. Are we okay powering through here?
Thank you guys.
What's the feeling?
I just need to take a two second.
Okay, take a two to three minute break and we'll come back. Yeah?
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're back in session. We'll take it to item 3F, which is receive information from county department heads regarding positions impacted by the hiring freeze and consideration for exemptions to fill positions and provide staff direction as desired. CEO, Henny Ring?
Yes, Board. So as part of the budget process, as we are working on the '25, '26 budget process and as the May 6 meeting, the Board of Supervisors agreed to a hiring freeze of current funded 24, 25 positions, fiscal year 24, 25 vacant positions. Some department heads have concerns with that process. They are either have been in the middle of hiring interviews. There's letters of, that have gone out for offers. So the department heads are here today that may have liked to address some of those concerns with the board. Again, right now, since we are in the process of doing the '25, '26 budget, there are obviously financial concerns that admin is still trying to work through. It's a very fluid process. So I think with that, I would, if the department heads are here to address some of those before the board, I think that's good. I would also like to have comments afterwards, if that's okay.
Yep, thank you very much. Want to go to department heads and then go to public comment and then bring it back to the board probably makes the most sense. So department heads, who do we have first? And if you're making your pitch?
Yeah.
If you might want to come up here toward the front and then we'll go one by one, the department heads. I believe there, last I talked to you, there were four, are there more than four?
I believe there were four. I don't know if they're all going to still do it, but I believe that there were four concerns from the department.
So I see we have Selena Stotlers here. Would you like to kick it off?
I'll kick it off. Okay, let me just grab my notes. Okay, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I am kindly requesting and urgently requesting that you accept recruitment for two of our vacant positions that are ready for interviews and for our temporary hiring needs. These include hiring of a staff service specialist as well as a code enforcement officer. And then of course, the temporary hiring. All positions are non-general funded and instead fully funded through our integrated waste management funds. Integrated waste management is falling behind currently on our accounting, our grant administration, and we have an abundance of reporting requirements this summer. Filling these non-general funded positions will ensure that we can continue to make swift progress with the encampment cleanup, riverbed cleanup efforts. Overall, these fully funded positions will support solid waste and recycling, state mandated programs and reporting, grant administration and implementation, and solid waste code enforcement, including illegal dumping and encampment support, which is in addition to our mandated programs. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have and deeply hope you consider unfreezing these recruitment needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Who would like to go next?
Melinda?
Good afternoon. As the Treasurer, Tax Collector, Department Head, a major source of revenue for not only the general fund, but school districts, special districts, the whole entire county. On the tax collector side, I have four people who handle $200 million worth of property taxes. And then on the treasurer's side, I have two employees that handle, we have a $400 million portfolio. We're the bank for all the general funds plus the school districts and some special districts. On the treasurer's side, that is fully, the costs are fully absorbed through the interest allocation, which is about $1 million a month. So there is no cost to the general fund for treasury. I have two employees. I'm actually working on one, just using, I just have one employee right now. The second employee, we've done two rounds of interviews, our applications. The first one, somebody turned it down and then we actually hired somebody for that position. This has been since August, however, that person didn't work out. So we did another round of recruitment, offered that position to somebody. They declined it again. And so I had just turned in an offer letter for HR to review on that Friday before the board meeting on Tuesday where you froze the positions. And so I'm asking you to consider letting me hire that one position in treasury. There is no cost to the county. It's considered a net county, zero net county cost department.
Okay, thank you, Melinda.
Okay.
Anything, any others?
Good afternoon, Tom Slavich County Assessor. We have a couple positions. We just started recruitment. We got approval on it, but then based on your action, it was frozen. It was for a computer mapping specialist. So basically, that's like the starting point of the office. If we don't have that position in place, you know, we can't get our appraisals done. So basically, if we have subdivision maps that come in, lot line adjustments, records of survey, can't really get them drawn up, then you can't get the work done to the appraisal staff. And, you know, property tax is the main source of revenue in this county. And so that really would bog things down. So that position is kind of crucial to get back and advertised and filled. We also had assessment clerk position. We just let somebody go, wasn't working out on probation. And right now, we're on the front office staff, we're probably down 40%. So what that would mean is I would have to take some of my appraisal staff to sit in the front office and do a rotation type thing. And that's kind of an important position as well, processing assessments and so forth. So that's another position I would like to move forward with, if you take that under consideration. Any questions?
Yeah, I think we'll come back with that after we do public comment. Any other department heads? Okay, we have probation. Chief Canes?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having me. I recently received open vacancy because we had one of my staff retire after 21 years of service. So that retirement resulted in a promotional opportunity in which one of my clerical support staff applied and then we had some upward movement creating a vacancy in my clerical support staff. As a department, we have four OAs for a staff of 50 in our department and each of those roles is critical to operations at the probation department. We have someone who sits at the front office. We're open Monday through Friday, eight to five. We do not close for the lunch hour. So there's essentially someone stationed there 45 hours every single week. We have someone who is dedicated to the court desk. Every single court report that we submit to the court, every single year has to be vetted, you know, profred, make sure it encompasses all the things it's supposed to. We have an office assistant vacancy in that specific position based off of the promotional movement up that that staff was given. We also have an office assistant who handles all of basically our accounts payable, accounts receivable, as far as reconciling, as far as reporting. We have someone who handles all of the Department of Justice entries that we have to do. And so there's a lot of work that everyone is doing and I need all four of those positions to be filled in order to do that, just to provide a little bit of context as far as the court desk, which is the specific vacancy that I have right now. And running a report just for this fiscal year, we, as a probation department, have filed 1,103 reports between July 1st, 2024, to the end of April. So the criticality of this position and this brand-new open vacancy that I have, which is really just because we had somebody retire and we had upward movement, it's very important and I would ask that you consider unfreezing that position so that I can move forward with hiring for that. I do also want to note that two of these positions, we, as a probation department, currently supplement with non-general fund dollars. So we have one position that is funded through my internal SB 678 probation specific funds. And then also built into this current fiscal year budget as well as going into fiscal year budget '25, '26, we are paying for an office assistant in the amount of a little under $90,000 for salary and benefits. So. So I would ask that that also be taken into consideration as, as a department, we do everything that we can to supplement and not have to come before and ask for general fund dollars and use our own grant funds or other opportunities that I've sought to bring as much revenue into the county as possible. So, do you have any questions?
I think we'll, same for, I think the overall clarity is just, again, kind of running through how many positions each department has, but I think maybe we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Do you have a public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment.
Oh, was there anyone else? I'm sorry, was there any others? I thought there were four. That's it? Okay, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, questions and comments and just further clarity. I think you put up a one, Chief Canes, one position. And then treasurer's office had one position. And assessor's office had two positions. And integrated waste had two positions. And temp staff, okay. Anyone want to start? And, oh, yeah, did you want to go now?
Yeah, as I mentioned, you know, we are in the process of working on 2526 budget and we're still trying, it's very fluid. What I would respectfully request is that we still just keep the hiring freeze for a couple more weeks, let us work out some more of the numbers. I, just because it's, I, I understand there are timeframes and the departments and their concerns and they, you know, this was already budgeted for 2425. I think in the best interests of going forward that we just pause still a little bit longer so we can get a better handle of the budget for next year. Thank you.
Who wants to kick it off? You want to go first?
Sure. I would just respect CEO's recommendation to just hold off for a little bit longer. The only question I had, just to get clarity on the treasurer position, did you say there was an offer letter given to them or an offer letter given to HR to eventually give to them? I'll just to clarify that.
That offer letter was given to HR for a review. Same letter that I sent to the other person that declined it, but I felt it was appropriate to send it to HR first.
Okay, I was just trying to understand that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I piggyback on that since?
Yeah.
Melinda's up there?
Yes.
Melinda, this is the treasurer's office where you only have two? And right now, you're down to one, is that correct?
Correct, correct. We've limited our hours. We had to try to keep up on all our reconciliations.
How far behind are we? Because I remember when this happened in 2012, there was a backlog, an extensive backlog that happened in, whether it was deposits coming in from departments and being posted. Are you current right now or?
Yeah, I don't want to, I, I don't want departments to be holding their deposits in their, I want them to, to deposit them. I don't want that to become a way of thinking that they don't want to, you know, come and deposit. But we have had to limit our hours. And if we don't get another person, we're going to have, if we can't fill that vacancy, we're going to have to limit it a little bit more. But we do encourage people to come and make those deposits with us. It's just that there's a lot of reconciliations that take up a lot of time and that's what we're kind of struggling with.
And is the reconciliation the actual where it then is posted and it's able to be seen by the departments? I'm just remembering back where we had a period of time when we really slashed departments and our, the ability to be able to see the revenues coming in had a delay. And with our budget being challenged the way it is, it's the one area, I'm like, we have to make sure that we know what's coming in and that the reconciliation and posting of those are timely.
So the deposits are being done. It takes two people to review everything just for internal control purposes. So I'm the seventh person in that department. I'm half treasurer and I'm half tax collector, so I divided my time between the two, but I have to spend more time in, on the treasurer also because it requires two people to be able to review all our transactions and get them posted into the GL. So we are, we have caught up on getting things posted into the GL, but we're struggling to keep up with the reconciliations and we do a lot of reconciliation with the auditor's office. So that part of it's been quite a challenge.
Okay, thank you, Melinda, for everything you're doing.
Suozia Velazquez?
I want to thank you for, all of you for coming out, but I agree, I think we're a few weeks away from getting this done, the budget. I'll have a better idea at that point. I know it hurts, but I think I'd, I'd rather wait until we get through the budget process.
President Setello?
Thank you. I, I understand the sentiment with waiting and I think we should for the majority. I'm just wondering on this one for Melinda's, because it's been vacant since, or you've been struggling kind of with the recruitment since August, you've had some hires. And it sounds like they've done all the interviews, they have somebody that's right there and ready to go. I'm just wondering if maybe on that one position, could we make the exception until? I just worry that for our treasurer and tax collector, even though May 29th is a few weeks away, that very well could eliminate the potential of her having the, you know, the potential of a hire because they may have moved on by that point. So that would be my only reservation is I would be good with opening it up for that one position. And I think that, you know, the fiscal is incredibly important for everything that we're doing and so I wouldn't want to fall behind any of that area. So I would be comfortable moving forward with that one exception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to actually talk about integrated waste because we have given them a task of cleaning out our riverbeds and I, we had an exemption for public safety. And so code enforcement officer wouldn't technically be, fall under public safety. But I consider code enforcement, particularly in this manner, to be along those lines. And I, I'm interested in this topic particularly because of the urgency of what we've tasked the department of doing, but also if Selena, if you have just a moment to address the, these, the unique dynamic of integrated waste being funded by, what would be the impact if we stalled, let's just say we stopped for a month, let's just be, do a rough a month on, and come back in a month and reassess this whole situation, what would be the impact?
So I, I would say that next week I would have to stop the encampment cleanup and then I would also have to, because I just can't manage it. I have to start focusing on the other projects. And then for the illegal dumping, I would probably have to pull our staff person that is doing the reporting focused on that. We have another recycling coordinator position unfilled. I'm underfilling that with the staff service specialist, which is going to be, we were just ready for interviews. So I would have to probably pull him from his illegal dumping work as well to do the grant reporting support and other mandated programs.
As far as the staff services, kind of it?
Yeah.
What if we theoretically went forward with code enforcement, but waited a month on staff services? And these are, again, these are not general funded.
So I would say for the, for the code enforcement position, we could probably look to if it's agreeable, we had talked about maybe contracting that out. I could use the funds, I'd have to do a budget adjustment, but I, we've already had two unsuccessful recruitments for the code enforcement officer. We were ready to do, it's open recruitment, so we were ready to do another round of interviews for that. I just, I, I think if we want to get someone in as soon as possible, probably do a contract for that work, but what I really need is the staff service specialist. That's what's going to take away my time if, if I don't have that filled.
Oh, you're saying the staff service specialist is the one that you need more urgently regarding the encampment cleanup?
No, so the staff service specialist, I would need to do all of the general support work for integrated waste. I'm saying right now, a lot of my time is being dedicated to the encampment cleanup efforts. And so I have state reporting requirements this summer that, and, and certain deadlines before July that we need to meet, and I'm going to need to divert my time to that if I can't get the position filled.
President Zenger?
Yeah, so I just, I guess I want to understand, so I understand you're working the encampment and you're going to have to stop and do the other, the other things that need to be done. So that's why the encampment cleanup would have to stop?
Yeah, I mean, unless admin or someone else can help guide and do the day-to-day, I'm out at the riverbed almost every morning, 7:00 AM, to help strategize on this and kind of stretch the funds as much as possible. We're working on donations, I'm working with admin. I'm, I'm helping Manny with admin lead these meetings with the encampment working group. It's taking up a lot of my time and so I'm falling behind on other programs, other requirements that I have to, to do.
Do you have thoughts interim CEO, on how we could potentially address? Because I don't want to stop encampment cleanup if Selena's saying that she's, she's got to shift at some point. We're talking about a month here as well, so I, I'm hoping we can all sort of balance that and work together here to figure out a solution before we have a clearer picture on this budget.
And I just want to say one more thing, sorry. Honey, you know, these funds are completely separate from general fund issues. This is integrated waste management funding, it does not impact the general fund.
Question, Selena, the staff analyst, was that a recruitment that was already existing? So we have a list, you were getting ready to do interviews?
Yeah, the Monday or Tuesday that I think the freeze occurred, we were going to schedule the interviews.
This is a full-time FTE, this isn't a part-time or extra help position?
No.
Again, if this is funded through other sources behind, behind general fund and it, it, it's directly or indirectly impacts the help, the assistance with the, with the riverbed cleanup, we could potentially fill it if we're willing to, if the board's willing to look at it instead of a full-time person, maybe limited term or something until Selena's, you know, finished with that project. I think there's still things that we can discuss. It, it really is, again, we're, we're just asking for a few weeks, but I know that's the direct impacts to Selena right now with the riverbed, so.
What is the, like, urgency of, like, you can't wait, let's just say it's a month or a few weeks or a month?
Sure, so we have the regional agency billing that I'm almost, you know, a year behind on, so where we build the cities and the county, I need to dedicate, you know, a couple days to, to just that alone, to complete that. We've got our local task force that I need to prepare the agenda, the, that's in June, that those are quarterly required meetings that we have, and so I have to review the whole agenda, prepare the presentations, put together all the accounting documentation. And then we have several grants that we have not yet even spent funds on. SB 1383, almost $200,000 awarded, none of it spent to date. I need to start putting together contracts. I've been putting that out for months because of encampment work as well as, I think Steve's coming over here, as well as, you know, the sanitary ad hoc work as well. So we're, we're being stretched very thin and I've been without that position filled since October when that position left for a, a position in San Mateo County, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Board. As Selena's department head, just to give you a little bit of insight, because Selena won't say this, but she's been working until 11:00 PM multiple nights, mostly on encampment cleanup efforts and coordination. And today, we were out at the encampments, just walking around with, let's just say, driving around with the sheriff and, and our public works director, our public works superintendent, Jason, to try to come up with a strategy to just continue with the board's direction on the encampment cleanups. But we also have another person in integrated waste that was here till 10 o'clock the other night and it's a little bit frustrating when we have non-general funds available to be used instead of having our current staff working till 10 and 11 o'clock at night to implement the will of the board. And I'll try to get a little worked up about it, but it's, that's all I wanted to say for your consideration, so.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, it wasn't brought up, but I've heard it's a critical issue. There's supposed to be a finance person for RMA that we need to be hiring for and that could potentially be causing us issues?
Yes, that's true, but we were going to discuss that on the 29th.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I'm of the belief, because this is non-general funded, because we've given a specific task to be done, that we should exempt the integrated waste positions from the freeze.
I think there's, everybody's made a valid point. Melinda, I think you said yours is funded from where? Wouldn't be from the general fund?
I was going to bring that up as well, yeah.
Right. All right, so. All right. You know, we are facing, we don't know what we're really facing yet, but to keep us all moving here, to be, to compromise, some will say I don't compromise, but I do. I would say if maybe, maybe we allowed one, one per department, one person per department, we can all move forward. So we're one for you, one for Melinda, one for probation, one for Tom's office, and we can get through.
You are like the fairest guy in politics locally at this point. Geez, Matthew.
I've learned a lot of things over the years and I, I do know there's points where they do need to function. I mean, I, look, I would, I would rather ask you guys to hold off for a month, but I, I get what you're saying by hearing your needs. I know the deadlines are coming up, so I, I do understand that and it does make a valid argument. So that's me, Mr. Fair Guy.
Any other thoughts? I know this is a really difficult topic. Look, I, yes, and, and I don't want to sound trite, that we all value, like, everybody made a great case, but we also need to really understand this budget situation. We don't have full clarity on it yet, which is why we wanted to hit the brakes, but just, go ahead, Suozia Crowe.
So there was, the conversation that Manny had was collaborating with the city of Hollister on the encampment cleanup. Selena, been there, done that, feel for you, really do. But understanding that we only budgeted $250,000 so far and we don't even know if we can continue it after that. I have real concerns of what are we going to be able to fund because we don't have a handle completely on our, on our budget. My biggest concern is, is every one of you, everybody has valid points about why they need who they need. Where I don't want to get to is where we were in 2012 and I'm very nervous about it, where department heads had to make cuts that were so drastic. I mean, we cut hours for the public, down to three hours a day in some departments. That's how bad it got. And until we know what that's going to look like, can we pause some of the issues? My biggest concern, I hate to say it, is, no offense, Selena, you're doing a phenomenal job, and Steve, thank you for standing up for your employee because it's very important, but understanding what is essential to be able to continue to keep the doors open. If our treasurer's office is behind, I have real concerns about that. There was a period of time it was very ugly for our, our, you, you can't manage money if you don't know how much money's coming in. And that's where I keep going. And I don't want to get to where we were. Is it possible to put a pause on all of this until we really know fiscally where we're at? I mean, are we talking four weeks? Are we talking six weeks? Because I'll tell you, I'd rather pause for six weeks than come to each of you and say, guess what? We have to cut so bad that it's going to be two years before you're able to fill those positions again, because that's what was done to us back then. And that was down to zero accountants and auditors in the auditor's office. That was down to two people running three disciplines. So it, it's just, my biggest concern is, can we make it a couple of weeks until we have a better idea of where we're at? I, I, I don't know if there is a way we can. I don't know if there is a way we can do that. Can we pause in the middle of the process of where you're at on encampments? Or is that going to cost us more money? I mean, these are the things I just don't know. So I, I'm not on the budget ad hoc, I don't know how bad things are. But my mind goes to the worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario is when we have to make those drastic decisions. And we come to each and every one of you as department heads and say, not only do you have to cut, you have to cut thirty-five, forty-five percent. And that just keeps me up at night. We talked about what keeps you up at night. Keeping me up at night is the idea that we could be back where we were, which I thought we would never be again. And this is, remember, the state budget? I'm going to be at a meeting on Thursday about the state budget and their projections. That does not look good at all for the subvented fund department, so.
CEO ring?
Yeah, one other thing I would like to mention is if any of these positions we move forward with filling in this process, that admin may have to look a little bit more deeply into departments and other general fund positions. So to, there may be some other positions that we may have to look at within those departments as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that is been relayed.
So, and I just want to clarify, we're getting close on the budget because of, you know, transition and things we've talked about. We're, you know, changing the methodology to a better methodology. We really just need a better handle on actuals. I've been saying this all along. Our actuals need to be the focus, and we're getting there, we're pretty close. I don't want to say the sky is falling, but we also don't want to ignore the possibility that we could be facing a potential budget challenge here. And that was the reason for it. I would just say from a, from the standpoint of Integrated Waste being non-general fund, I mean, this is a, here's, I'm just going to say it bluntly. If we do have a big problem, we have, we're going to face potential layoffs if there's a problem. And then we are going to have to shift potentially some of our current employees into some of these open positions. I'm just going to put it out there, that's what we're facing here, that's the reality of this. That's why there's a hesitation to fill these roles. I think everyone deserves to know that. Not saying the sky is falling, we just don't quite have a handle on it. We're getting there. So that's the overall context of where we're at, as far as why we would hit the brakes for a few weeks. My only thought on the Integrated Waste portion is that there are three jurisdictions involved. We are not the only jurisdiction putting funding into Integrated Waste, it is not general fund. And we have given them a specific task of cleaning out the encampments. And that is why I thought that would be, for me, the one logical exemption. But if there's a way to get Selena some help in the next few weeks and some support on the, I think that would be another option, just to wait for a few weeks. If we can maybe pull back somewhere else administratively, get her some help so that she can continue moving forward on this task. We can't just stop the encampment cleanup. We started it, we can't stop it. It makes no sense. So that's kind of, is there a way we could give her some support for?
I think we can look into that, we can certainly look into that this week. If you want to move forward with the recruitment, we can do that, go through that process. Or we can look internally and see if there's any other movement that we can make within the county.
Because I just, I don't know where the rest of the board stands on this, but, I mean, it's a month. It's not the end of the world, I think, for the most part, I just don't want to stop. If we stop the encampment cleanup, they're all going right back. And we just wasted, everything we've done here for the last two weeks is just a complete waste. The money itself is a waste. So that's kind of where I'm at, I don't want to stop the encampment cleanup. That's my biggest holdup. I think everything else, with all due respect to departments, can wait a month. I do think if the Treasurer position is, is not coming, if it's, if it's being funded, if it's self-funded, I don't, I don't actually have a problem with that one either. I would be, I'd be open to that, but to me, I just, I don't want to stop the encampment cleanup.
Chair.
Sucre Zenger?
Just hearing all the discussion, I would, what I would recommend would be just moving forward with the one position in the Treasurer's Office and the one in Integrated Waste, since they're both non-general fund. And just leave it at that.
Was your position at probation was also not general fund? The only one that was general fund that brings in all the money in the county is the Assessor. So that brings us back to Supervisor Velazquez, one, one, one. You see how we went full circle?
I'm going to entertain a motion to Supervisor Velazquez, would you like to repeat your motion?
I'll make a motion that we allow one position per department, as discussed here today.
We have a second? I'll second it, all is in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cuzmicke?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five, zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. That brings us thankfully to the adjournment, your adjourn.